...immediate order, since we're just a couple minutes after 10 o'clock. And so, let me see, it's been so long, uh, let me get my agenda here. Oh, we're already. Okay, Ken, you want to use the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and let me see while I look for my agenda, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Mr. Brenton? Mr. Denio?
Here.
Mr. Seveson? Mr. Gray, that's absent, Mr. Moss? Mr. Johnson?
Here. Okay, so now we have an opportunity for our planning director to give us a presentation and bring us up to date on what we've been missing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Paul Thompson with planning, um, just a little bit of background here, the board on February 8th, I'm not sure if, um, I reported this out, but they approved the Fallon poultry zoning text amendment on that date, and on the April 11th board meeting, uh, we presented a biomass update, that's the biomass projects that, that's in the Kings Beach area. On April 12th, uh, the board approved the temporary waiver of the sign ordinance, uh, and we also provided an update, um, to their board relating to the Tahoe Basin community plans, update that we're proceeding with, and the regional plan update, TRPA's regional planning update. On future board meetings, May 24th, uh, the staff will be presenting the emergency shelter zoning text amendment that the planning commission, uh, heard, um, previously, and future planning commission agendas, May 26th is a Tahoe planning meeting, we'll be hearing the North Star Mountain Lodge at that hearing, the Sugar Bowl Academy, and the Sugar Bowl Academy is a, um, a skis, um, a school that specializes in, um, ski training, um, and it's up in the Sugar Bowl area, it's a temporary conditional use permit. No, it's not. It's, it's, ultimately, that's what they want to do, it's like the, the Squaw Valley Academy, I think that's what that one's called, this one's up in Sugar Bowl.
What day is May 26th?
Pardon?
Is that a Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. And the 24th is?
May 24th is a board meeting.
Oh, okay, so that's not our meeting, all right.
Right. Uh, and the other item that we'll be hearing is the rafting permits, uh, there's two rafting companies that are up for renewal of their permits, it's their three-year permits, and we'll be hearing two, two rafting permits on that date as well. And then on June 9th, uh, tentatively, we'll be hearing the forced till divide community plan, uh, amendment, and this is a result of the settlement agreement and some policy changes that we'll be bringing before your commission. And the enclave at Granite Bay as well, and that's a project that was heard previously, um, by your commission, went to the board, and the board approved a rezoning and general plan amendment for that property at a reduced density, and so, and directed the staff to bring back a tentative map that matches that density, so it went from 26 units and down to 12 units, I think, so we'll be presenting that tentative map, conditional use permit, and I think there's a tree permit as well, uh, on that date. And then on the June 23rd, uh, we were thinking, Warren Clark had suggested maybe, uh, your commission might be interested in a presentation on the redistricting that's, um, happening, uh, that we're undergoing currently, as well as the, uh, Placer County Conservation Plan as well. So, if you're interested in, in a presentation on that, we'll be happy to do that on the 23rd. Okay?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, I don't see a lot of people from the public out there, but is there anybody that wants to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda today? Okay, not seeing anybody. We'll go ahead and move into our first, uh, item, which is dealing with, uh, an ultralight park, and we have Lisa Carnahan, so Lisa?
Good morning. Uh, yes, uh, on January 13th of 2000, the planning commission did approve CUP 2487, which allowed the use of the ultralight field out on Baseline Road, um, as a result of a complaint from a nearby resident, there was the stipulation put on the use permit that within 10 years, they needed to come back, just to make sure that the use was still consistent with the local area. Um, this item is a request for a CUP modification to remove that 10-year periodic review requirement and allow the operation to continue operations in perpetuity. And also, the, uh, original use permit allowed for two hangars, one of which wasn't constructed in 2001, and the other hangar which was supposed to be constructed within five years. Well, due to economic factors being the way they are, and, uh, the use of the airport being very limited, up to this point, that second hangar has not been constructed, and the applicant is asking for an additional 10 years for that. This is an aerial of the ultralight field, um, surrounding area, as you can see, it's west of Lincoln and Roseville, and way down, uh, right on the border, uh, with the next county, uh, and in fact, here's Sacramento County, so it's out on Baseline Road, right out here. Um, the surrounding site and all the, uh, the surrounding sites to the north, west, and east are all zoned the same as the property, which is farm 80 acre minimum, the areas just south over Baseline is zoned, uh, residential ag 10 acre minimum with a development reserve com- combining district. A mitigated neck deck was adopted at the original time back in 2000 by the planning commission, uh, no new impacts are associated with this use permit modification, and, uh, therefore a categorical exemption, uh, class one existing facilities is being requested at this hearing. Uh, this is an aerial of the, uh, site itself, along with, you can see the two water ski parks, uh, area of agricultural, this is the little bit of residential around here, and this is the airfield itself, this is the hangar that was constructed in 2001, here's one grass runway, and here's the other grass runway. The owner, uh, whoops, excuse me, Ray Mello, who's, who's here today, um, constructed his home on this secondary parcel here in 2007. The existing and continued use of the airport, um, as an ultralight field is consistent with the farm zoning, the surrounding area, and the limited, um, residential housing of the area. Uh, it's a private air club that's limited to 40 members, there's approximately 20 currently, uh, one of the, and all of the members are expected to comply with the rules which are stated in the staff report, one of which is that at no time are any of the pilots to fly south of Baseline or west, uh, over the houses. Normal noticing of this, uh, hearing today went out, uh, to property owners within 300 feet, and Mr. Mello put these signs on the building which were visible from Baseline, so everybody was aware. After the staff report was printed, uh, and notices went out, it was, uh, became, came to my attention that there was the, um, compatibility issue that was raised with that, the one neighbor back in 2002 and 2003, they had written in, however, since that time, eight years ago, there's been nothing, no, there's nothing in the, uh, that's been sent to the county, to my knowledge, or to code enforcement. Um, there were a lot of, I'm going to go back a slide here, there were a lot of letters in the file from other neighbors who stated that, um, the airport was a really great neighbor, they've had no issues, no noise issues, the airplanes weren't flying over their houses, anything, so they were very pleased, and they thought that the air, uh, airfield was an asset to their community. The owner did submit additional information with the current request that said that there have been no accidents in the last 10 years, and that nothing at the airport has changed during that time period, and so, with that, the Development Review Committee recommends to the planning commission to approve the CUP modification, uh, subject to the findings and conditions of approval listed within the staff report, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead.
How did we get a timeline for building the second hangar, or requirement to build it within a cer- what was the?
Originally? You mean the, the original requirement for the, usually when they're going to phase something, they say within X number of years, you should do the second portion of this, which was the second hangar.
I mean, can't we just approve it for a second hangar when he's ready to build it?
We could.
And not put him in a position of having to come back?
Come back and...
Because we failed to forecast the market one, one more time?
Certainly, we can do that. Any other questions?
I have one, one quick question, just, um, looks like a real low activity type of use, uh, with 20 members, and I don't know how often they fly, but just, how often do they fly around that area?
Um, I'll let, uh, Mr. Mello address that a little bit further, but, um, in discussions with him, it's, it's rare, it's mostly weekend, um, you know, it's good weather, you know, all, obviously, these planes are small, so if the winds are over five miles an hour, normally, the planes aren't up, um, so, and it's, it's kind of seasonal, it's, it's base, you know, they, uh, so it's, it's infrequent.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Rich.
Here.
Lisa, I was looking at the conditions of approval, and specifically number three, that you crossed out, and that one says that the park shall be allowed to have two personal aircraft operated from the premises. You're proposing to delete that, apparently as part of this reconsideration, yet there's no discussion of this requirement at all in the staff report, uh, can you explain that?
Yes, um, in speaking with the applicant owner, those were his personal planes that he no longer has at the airfield anymore, so he felt that the, uh, it was not necessary to have that condition of approval in there anymore because it wasn't applicable.
All right, I've got to, I've got to be explained on this, at one time, we limited him to two personal aircraft for some reason, now he has 20 members, maybe I should better ask him, it seemed to me that there might be 20, 30 of these things out there now.
Right, no, yes, that is a little confusing, I can see how you'd be, uh, have a question there, that, those were his own personal aircraft outside of, uh, the ultralights. He no longer has those other aircraft that are not ultralights at the airfield anymore, so, yes, everybody else has their ultralights there, so it's not limiting.
Okay, it was, the word aircraft was meant to refer to heavier aircraft, not ultralight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I've, I've got one, one question on two, and also, we're allowing light sport aircraft, right?
Yeah, that's just a clarification, um, because one, uh, part 103 of the FAA regs said that, um, you could have a trainer, uh, which is a two-seater, um, but those regs kind of, uh, they had a sunset period, so the light sport aircraft, uh, portion of that allows them to have trainers there, the two-seater trainers.
Yeah. Okay, anymore? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Would the owner like to get up and address the commission?
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, I think Lisa did a great job, I'm not sure if I could add anything to that.
Okay, could you give us your name, so we just have it on the record?
My name is Raymond Mello, owner and operator of Freedom Field.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Merci, do we have anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on this project? Not seeing anybody, I'll bring it back to the commission. More questions, what's your pleasure?
Well, if nobody, um, has any comments, I would, um, move that we approve the conditional use permit modification, subject to all the CUP findings, and the conditional use modification with, um, the deletion of any, any timeline for the second, um, hangar, where basically, you know, there's not a timeline put on it, hear that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have, uh, Jeffrey seconded it, kind of quietly.
Let's, let's discuss it.
Okay.
Jeff, I don't understand where you're headed with that comment, I'm not against it, I just don't understand it, can you explain it to me?
Well, there's a timeline that says the hangar must be built by a certain date, otherwise, the applicant is going to be back before us or some other discretionary approval board asking for an extension. If it's approved to build a hangar, a second hangar, to me, it's not really critical as to when that gets built, or if it ever gets built, but it's, it's approved, why put him in a position of having to come back and ask for a discretionary approval a second time, if it's six years from now he wants to build it instead of five, or, or what happened?
If I could sort of jump on that, I, I think, really, where that comes in, where I can see that coming in is, is if somebody comes before us with a project and said, hey, I'm going to start this project, and I'm going to start it in five years, eight years, two years, whatever, you want him to get that first phase done, or whatever, and it, and something like this, where it's just a, like, in addition to your house or something, why would you have to bring it back before a body just to say, okay, I'm ready to start, or I need another year before I start it? The basic infrastructure's been done out there and everything, and so I, I just sort of s- see this as something that just makes, makes it harder for him, but I understand the reason on having those, so when a project comes before us and it's not done, or says, he hasn't built anything out there yet, that he, it sort of forces him to at least get one of them done, he's got that done, so I'm, I'm thinking now, if he wants to build the second one, he's got the approval to do it.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the logic, here's, here's where I'm getting hung up, and Scott, maybe you can help me get over this, and that is, in every conditional use permit, building permits, all of these things that we've done in the past, there's a window within which construction has to begin, or else they have to reapply, now this is a discretionary permit that we're now going to make into something that's, you know, in perpetuity, and Roseville and Lincoln and West Placer are all starting to hinge on that area, is it wise to allow this to kind of hang out there forever, can, does it violate some Placer County policy or some state statute?
I don't think so, actually, this permit has been exercised for, for all intents and purposes, and, uh, so, uh, whether or not you delete that 10-year requirement really is up to your discretion, uh, the permit has been exercised, and he is entitled to continue that use, the only question is whether he's entitled to, uh, a second, uh, hangar without having to come back if he doesn't do it within 10 years, otherwise, he gets to continue all the rest of the uses as a, as a, as an ultralight site and the first hangar.
Okay.
Cause I, I guess too, he has to go in and draw the permits and pay the fees and everything else that, that goes along with it, just like if you were improve, doing a house improvement.
Oh, absolutely, he would have to comply with all permit requirements such as building permits and any permit fees for that second hangar.
I, I see a condition like this would be about, more valid if, if in fact, it was some kind of, of public improvement, some kind of infrastructure, like you had to improve the, the frontage road or, or the right-of-way in front of the place there, you know, for public safety or something like that, but for a second building, I, I don't see where the requirement, or the condition is really, um, necessary, but if it was something else that would involve some kind of infrastructure, then yes, then he would have to have, you know, built it within five years, I would say that they should stay in, but, uh, this way, I don't think so.
Okay, any more comments? Okay, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's been approved, let me see, this, uh, if anybody wants to appeal this, they have a right, as long as they appeal it within 10 calendar days, and the appeal fee is $504. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we'll move on, let me see, the time-wise, we're, uh, doing good, actually right on schedule. And so, the next item, uh, occurs up in the Kings Beach area, has to do with, uh, the Tahoe paddle and oar, and, uh, let me see, we have Steve Bula, who's going to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The item we're bringing before your commission today for consideration is the appeal of the zoning administrator's February 2nd decision to approve the minor use permit for Tahoe paddle and oar. This project is located, uh, at the site of the Falcon Lodge, uh, which happens to be, I need to advance the slides here, um, situated on the south side of State Route 28 in the Kings Beach area. Just by way of a, a little bit of history for this project, back on, uh, May 18th, 2004, thanks Paul, Phil Segal applied for a minor use permit, uh, which allowed for 20 kayaks to be located on the south side, um, of the Falcon Lodge motel site, um, this entitlement actually was appealed to the planning commission, and ultimately, the board of supervisors where it was approved, uh, on, just, in December 2004. Uh, this particular approval was limited to five years, uh, time period, and this primarily had to do with the concern, uh, with compliance of several of the different outdoor recreation concessions in the area. Uh, the minor use permit was modified in 2005 to address one of the conditions which, uh, put, uh, time limits or, uh, off-season for, uh, the entitlement, this lifted, um, that restriction so that the kayak concession could be, uh, used year-round. Because of the five-year, um, time limit on this entitlement, on August 3rd, 2010, the applicant, uh, applied to extend the permit an additional five years, at the same time, the applicant, uh, took this opportunity to, uh, seek to increase the number of kayaks from 20 to 40. During the review of this application, the application was placed on hold, uh, this had to do with some code violations at the site, uh, the code violations were not, um, related to the kayak operation itself, uh, but they were, uh, more related to the operation of the, the motel, the Falcon Lodge motel. The code violations were resolved, uh, this project was scheduled for hearing before the zoning administrator on February 2nd, at that hearing, uh, after, uh, receiving testimony from the Development Review Committee, the applicant, uh, from Dave Ferrari, uh, who is the appellant in this matter, and other members of the public, uh, the zoning administrator took action to approve the minor use permit. The minor use, or the, uh, this approval was appealed within the 10, uh, day, time period by Dave Ferrari, uh, the appeal that was submitted cites, uh, nine, uh, items as the basis for the appeal, uh, in a moment here, I'll speak primarily to the, uh, concerns with impacts on law enforcement, uh, for the motel operation at the site. On two occasions, um, this appeal was, uh, presented before the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, uh, first as a informational item, and secondly, as an action item. On April 14th, um, the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council took action to recommend, uh, that your planning commission, um, approve the appeal and deny the minor use permit. In providing the recommend, recommendation, um, the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council emphasized primarily concern with increased use of this property when there's such a documented history of illegal activities at site. Again, the primary issue of concern here that is repeatedly raised is, uh, the numerous calls for service from local law enforcement at the, to the motel, um, where the project is located. Over the past three-year time period, the Placer County Sheriff's Office has received more than 258 calls to respond to incidents at the Falcon Lodge, um, the summary of these calls, uh, for the reports taken include assaults, physical fights, drug activity, thefts, threat, threats, arson, and probation searches. Similar to this discussion that's occurred at, uh, NIBRAC, uh, staff is concerned with the approval of an additional use at this site, that would actually draw persons to a location that has such a documented history of illegal activities and issues with law enforcement. Because of this, staff cannot recommend that the planning commission make the finding that the proposed use would not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, general welfare, welfare of the public, as the approval would actually be encouraging, uh, persons to enter the, uh, location that has such a documented history, uh, with law enforcement. Additionally, uh, staff has determined that there are other options available to Mr. Segal to, to conduct business, um, so the action to deny this minor use permit would not be detrimental to his operations. Because of his business location just almost immediately north of the site, uh, it's staff's position that he could, could operate, um, the outdoor recreation concession from his primary, um, business location, and, uh, that there are other options to, um, provide access to, uh, Lake Tahoe, such as the Coon Street Boat Launch, um, and the, uh, the parking area at the, uh, North Tahoe Convention Center. So, with that, and, uh, based on the recommendation of the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, and staff being unable to make the, the findings that the proposed project would not pose a safety concern, staff is recommending that the planning commission grant the appeal and deny the minor use permit, subject to the findings as they appear in your staff report, um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Steve, um, reading through all the documentation on these past three years with all the incidents that have happened where the police were called, were any of them instigated by the paddle and oar company, and were, were any of them called in regards to people that were renting or doing business with paddle and oar?
Not that I'm aware of.
And, second, second question to that, in the timeframe that they've been operating, have they violated any, you know, of their conditions of, of operation there?
We have not had any, uh, official, uh, complaints filed with code enforcement based on the Tahoe paddle and oar business.
So, everything that we're talking about right now has to do strictly with the property owner and, and the, the motel and actions there of, of his clientele and everything that, at least, that what we know of now?
That's correct, the, the calls for service from local law enforcement were, um, all, uh, relative to primarily tenants of the, uh, the Falcon Lodge site.
Okay.
Steve, uh, is it, does the granting of this appeal make it any more or less likely that the so-called criminal activity at the Falcon Motel is likely to continue?
Well, frankly, that would be speculative, the, uh, the, the staff's position here is that because of the problems which have occurred on the site, allowing additional uses on the site will result in the potential for additional conflicts to occur in the future, um, whether or not they will occur, of course, is some, is speculative, but...
Well, given that the staff conducted a certain amount of speculation to come up with that conclusion, I thought we'd just take it one step further and see if there's any reason to conclude one way or the other, if you simply don't have any opinion, that's fine, but is it going to make it any more or less likely that these criminal activities would be more or less, or, or the same? In other words, it, it, they're somewhat independent, aren't they?
Well, the, the two operations are independent, that is, that is correct, it's the Falcon Lodge and the Tahoe paddle and oar are operated under separate, uh, operators, um, but you're, you're correct, it is, I guess you could say speculative one way or the other, but, uh, it was staff's belief based... but it was staff's belief based upon recommendations from the MAC that to continue the additional activity there would potentially result in, in additional conflicts on that site.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not dismissing this applicant because he had the misfortune of having a lousy neighbor. So, I guess we can discuss that more.
Yeah.
I want to hear what the applicant has to say, thanks Steve.
Is there currently, I guess what you, you know, open actions of violation against the Falcon Lodge right now? You said code enforcement had some issues, but they came into compliance. Are there open citations now?
We don't have any open code violations at the site right now.
Okay, any more questions? Let me see, let me see, is Mr. Segal here? I mean, excuse me, let me, let me hold off on that. Ferrari, Mr. Ferrari, or Mrs. Ferrari?
Let me see, I've got a couple things I'd like, Dave Ferrari, Ferrari's Crown Resort, I guess I'm the, I filed it, I guess the complaint on this, the opposition on this. I've got a few things to give out to you folks. I think I have more pictures here than I need. Excuse me for taking your time here, but I had this put together, I managed to mess it all up on the way down.
Oh, we're figuring this out, can I ask a question? The denial, as recommended by staff, is, is the denial of the extra 20 kayaks or denial of the continuation of any kayaks at all at the site?
The recommendation is for denial of the minor use permit, so it would be that it would discontinue the-
No, so there'd be no kayaks there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did everybody hear that answer? It was kind of quiet, could you, could you repeat that? Some of us had a little trouble hearing, I think.
Yeah, my apologies. The recommendation of staff is for the denial of the minor use permit, so that would be the discontinuation of the kayak rentals at the site.
On that site.
There'll be no, no kayaks at all, it's not a matter of denying just the extra 20, there'd be no kayaks?
That's correct, the original use permit-
Expires.
-at a five-year time limit, so that is expired. And just as a note, what Mr. Thompson is handing out to you right now is a summary of some of the calls for service that, where reports were taken from the sheriff's office.
And the kayak rental is on the same property as the lodge?
That's correct, and right here from the screen, this is the Falcon Lodge site. The kayak rental is conducted right in this location here.
Okay, thank you.
And just for reference, Mr. Ferrari's Crown Motel is located right here. The Tahoe paddle and oar main shop location is located right in this area.
Steve, can you point that out again, I looked up too late to see all the dots.
No problem. I need less coffee here, so. Falcon Lodge site is right here, the kayak concession is conducted from this location there. This is Mr. Ferrari's Crown Motel location, and here's the main shop for the Tahoe paddle and oar. And just for reference, you're all familiar with the Conference Center, which is located just off-screen in this location here.
Okay, Mr. Ferrari, you ready to go?
Yeah. Sorry for the delay here, I'm, I sit on a public board as well, and I, I hate to stand up here in front of you today. I'd rather be speaking about a more positive, something, something more positive, but I would just like for the record to show that, that not only do we operate a business next door, we live next door, we have lived next door, this will be our 56th summer, and this will be our 56th summer in business. I think what, what really stirred me up on this, I think, was an incident that happened, well, a couple of things that happened last summer, but one was a phone call from one of our regular guests. We're in four generations with some of the families that come to our property. And his name is Joe Barbera, you have a letter from him in your packet. Joe's somebody that I've known since I was a young boy, he's come off and on over the years. I knew my folks, his mother used to come with him before she passed away. And Joe called me, you know, up to his room, he hadn't been there in a while, a couple of years, and his daughter's in a private college, he gotten out, and he called me up to his room, and I thought, you know, we're sitting, kind of shoot the bull. Well, Joe, and you'll see in the pictures, and that's where I took those couple of pictures, that Joe asked, he said, "Dave, I want you to look out this window." And so we looked out, looking straight at the lake, and then he said, "Dave, I want you to come back and look out my bathroom window." And I said, "Joe, I know, I know what's out there," and he said, "No, let's go look at it." And then, and then we went back and we sat down, and he, and he chastised me strongly. He said, "Dave, I was here three years ago," he said, "and," he said, "I can't believe it, but that property's worse now than it was then," and he said, "What, I can't believe you've let it go for this long." So, that was, that was tough on me. I think we also had a Saturday night in the summer where a guest walked in and said, "What's going on?" And I said, "Well, what do you mean?" I was, happened to be sitting at the front desk, and he said, "Well, there's four police cars in your parking lot." And, and he said, "I just saw a couple people, a couple deputies get out with rifles." And I said, "Well, I don't know," and so I went out, not sure what was going on. Well, I waited, and there was something happening next door, and I just asked to be told, you know, what had happened. And, and all as I know about the incident was that, that there was, you know, somebody, a couple people were arrested, and the woman that was the, I think the deputy said, "Well, I, we've taken care of a couple of your problems tonight over there," and so, but all, but I think, so I guess my point here is you, I don't think you can at all be able to say that this, that the operation there is not, and the condition of the property and the operation does not harm our business. And to be honest, business is very tough right now. We are, we've been down for three months this year, certainly, I can't point, I, I don't know how many people don't come back to our property that come. Our regulars still come, they're kind of used to it. I think they know, you know, what's going on, and they mostly still come, but it's pretty difficult on us. I will say that we don't have, you're correct, I, we don't really have an issue, and in my appeal, we don't really have an issue with the kayak operation. We work with Mr. Segal, provide rooms in exchange for advertisement, we're looking at doing even more now because he runs a good operation, and it's not really about him, but I think to, to have a minor use permit on your property is a, is a bit of a luxury. I mean, it's something, and it certainly comes, I assume, with some economic value. And, and I think you should have to keep up the property a minimum standard to have that. And I think for you, this is an operation that's open to the public, and we have public next door, and I don't know when you read everything that's going on over there, and you look at the pictures, how you would feel if you lived next door, and how safe you would feel. There's some, a couple of letters there from neighbor, neighbors. It's, I just, you know, I mean, that's, that's basically what we are saying. We've gotten, you know, we had really no problems before Fred, it was always run as a, as a motel. And Mr. Hodgson, I think he, he ran it as a motel, as a tourist occupancy for a while. I think there's some of that going on, I'm unable to pull a TOT, the transient occupancy tax records, and I think if you guys can, that you should, and see, because that really is, it's owned for four housing units, and then I think 21 rental units. But that is the revenue that the county gets, tourist occupancy revenue is, is a significant amount of, of the tax you guys generate, especially from Lake Tahoe. So I think you, you should look at that and, and determine whether there really is a motel, a lodging operation happening there. There, as far as I know, there's never been a housekeeping staff, a maintenance staff. Right now, the, the manager's quarters has a sign on it that says, this is, it's been the manager's quarters since I can remember, and there's a sign up that says, "This is now a private residence, and the office is located at an address in Tahoe City," which I assume is Mr. Hodgson's house. So I don't know, I've never heard of a motel operation, I wish we could operate ours and live somewhere else, but we've chosen to stay there because we've watched what's happened to other places around us as, as they've hired or really not had adequate management. It's, it's not an easy business, we're all, the Falcon Lodge is an old place, the Crown is an old place. Our newest building is 1967, so, you know, it's difficult. And you'll also see a letter, a review that we just got on our property from TripAdvisor. And I think for, for the planning commission, this is speaking to a larger issue, that would be, we got a good review, they gave us four stars, and, four out of five, and that's good for us. That's about our average on Expedia or any of the different reviews, we're usually three and a half to four stars. We don't get a lot of fives because we're, the size of our rooms and the age of our rooms, we're, we're an old property, but we keep it up, we spend a lot of money keeping it up, we're spending a lot of money this spring to refurbish a number of rooms. But at the end of that letter, I think what's important is, and it speaks to the town, not just to the, to the Falcon Lodge, but I think it speaks to our town in general, but at the end of, of the, of the review, the person said, you know, "This was a nice place," like something, but then something to the effect that "I wish I would have stayed in Tahoe City." And so I think, so I think this is, speaks to the general deterioration of the town of Kings Beach, and, and how long, you know, and as things deteriorate, I think the county needs to be a little more proactive on, on, you know, having people maintain some type of minimum standards in what they're doing and how businesses are being run. Certainly, we try to do that and do more than a minimum standard. I, I think that the other important thing is that, there's, I have two binders back there that I, I had somebody organize for me that are the code enforcement files that exist on the property from 2002. When you, in 2002, the Health Department, there was a statement, this quote, it said, "Housing is substandard, and there are many other health issues related to the property in addition to complaint about garbage on the property." Vicky Sandoval, still works for your Health Department. In 2002, the tenants were evicted from the Falcon because of unsafe living conditions. Deputy Hunt was quoted in the paper as saying, "Deputies have been called to respond to domestic disputes, drug arrests, warrant arrests, and noise disturbances in past few months." May 2003, arrest of stolen property, ingestion device, smoke controlled substance, maintenance replace of drug use and sales, possession of drug, you know, it just, this has gone on really for, you know, since 2002. I think there was a period that there's not a lot of, I don't, I'm not going to waste your time and go through, but there's a number of other things that talk about substandard housing, dangerous buildings, and public nuisance, Brian Jones in 2003. You know, I think it kind of in the period of 2007, two, you know, 2006, 2007, we were all, you know, thinking we were going to get torn down, the CEP, the, you know, Community Enhancement Project came in, there were investors all around, I think we thought everything was going to come down, and we were all going to live happily ever after. Well, that ship's left the harbor, it left for us, it's left for the Falcon Lodge, and, and we didn't get on it as a family, and it, and I wish we would have, we should have got on that ship when it was there and the economy was good, and we didn't, and now we have to run a business. And I hope you'll consider that as you, as you make your decision. When you look at the police calls, the 258 calls, we actually went through, they averaged 49 minutes a call, longest was 12 hours, most calls in a day four, 35 days, two calls or more. There's another 47 fire calls, 10 Health Department complaints, so, and this is over the past three years. So, I, I just, again, I, we don't have a real problem with the kayak operation. I, the, the issues, the only remaining issues we'd have there still have to do with the parking, understanding the parking at the Falcon, and frankly, the parking across the street, because I've asked the county to, to look at it, because there's another conditional use permit, minor use permit, that involves jet skis and parasails that are, are, it's owned by the owners of the building where Mr. Segal operates out of, and they have parking for that concession there as well. And that parking lot was recently restriped because of, I think, an ADA complaint, so that's been restripped, so I'm not sure, you know, how much parking exists there now. So those would be, you know, the only, only concerns we have, but Mr. Segal runs a good operation, you can't, I can't deny that, so, but I think it's a bigger issue than that. I, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I just got to ask, how do you see no kayak operation there improving the conditions at the Falcon Lodge? How do you, how do you see that having a positive impact and, and heading you to the direction you'd like to see?
Well, I don't know, I, I was asked that at the, by the zoning administrator, he said, "So you think things will be, would get worse?" I, I don't know how they could get worse, I guess I put it that way, and-
I mean, I understand your frustration, but it seems to me this is more of an issue that needs to be answered globally for the whole community as far as, versus, you know, anything that happens here. I can't see how it's going to have an effect on the, on the quality of your neighbor, and I just-
Well, I guess maybe this is, is an opening, I, I don't know, and I, I do think that to have a minor use permit, you, there is some minimum standard, I, I, yeah, is it gonna, is it gonna help things? I, I, I don't, yeah, I would say probably not, unless, you know, unless somehow through all this, the county, the county will crack down and, and some improvements will happen, and we'll have a motel running next door again. I'd rather have, I mean, we need the competition, to be honest, in Kings Beach, we're the last place in town connecting, I think, collecting any significant TOT in the downtown, and there used to be a ton of businesses doing that. We have a reputation as, of being cheap rundown rooms, and it doesn't help us in running our business, certainly.
Can I have a question?
Okay, go ahead.
David, I think it would be helpful, excuse me, if you would point on that aerial photograph where the primary business is, and where the people have to go to get from the primary business to where the raft, or where the kayak rental portion of it would be. You see, I'm saying they have to physically either drive across the street and park in the motel, or they have to park at the corner of where the-
Right, well, the kayak, the kayak, yeah, they would drive, well, I think, I'm not too good at these, but- Do I have to turn it on?
You just set off a bomb.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Someplace.
I believe, okay, this is the kayak, yeah, this is the kayak place. So, they're going to here, and I don't know that people are driving there, I think people, you know, Phil can speak to this, but I think people probably walk down the beach a lot to access his place, because this is right here. This is a county, an unimproved county road, and I think a lot of the customers come this way, on the, on this road.
But where do they park?
Well, they're walking, they may be parked at the beach, I, you know, I'm not really sure of that. Otherwise, they either are going to park in here, or they would be parked over here and walk over, and then the kayaks are located right down here. Just so you, you know, the building that the pictures came from is- Just so you, you know, the building that the pictures came from is, this is our building. This is a private residence right here. It's not, not real happy with, with what's going on. There are private residences also here in the, above the Java Hut.
Is, is the little parcel to the right of the private residence part of the Falcon Lodge?
This parcel?
No, the next one to the left, that, that one.
This one?
No, to the right, that little narrow strip.
Right in...
Right in there.
Uh, no, that's, well, I believe that's a conservancy easement. But she got, she's got an easement that, that the conservancy, you know more about this than I, but they no longer do. But there's an easement there, but she is able to use and, and fence the property. So actually, the property is fenced all the way around. You know, the other, you know, the other issue here has, there's always been the issue of how you access to the lake, you know, anybody that these, these use permits, even the jet skis. So actually, the jet ski and parasail permit, if I understand it correctly, they have supposed access through this property, this private property. And she is paid each year something to, to allow that. So which gives them access down to the lake down here.
Who, who owns the big beach property on the right, right there?
This is, I believe the conservancy does. And I think the PUD manages it.
Okay. But didn't you say that piece was fenced on the left, the narrow one?
This piece here is fenced, all the way, the yellow, this parcel is fenced all the way around. But see, the 25-foot lot, she doesn't own, she only owns actually 25 feet here and then is able to, but somehow the easement that she was able to get back, see, she sold all this, or this was, when she, she sold this part. This all used to belong to this property, which also used to belong to the, the Maximeers owned it. And they had a little bar and restaurant here and they had cabins. And then they owned all this property as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, point, point exactly where they store their boats, where their kayaks, right there?
Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think right in, right in here.
Right there. Okay, what's that, what's the building right to the left, right there? What, what's there?
That's the foreplex of the Falcon Lodge. So that is actually, this is an interesting zoning. That's actually zoned as for housing units. It's actually residential units of use. The rest of it is all tourist occupancy. So this is actually allowable for 30-day and above occupancy. But when you look through the code enforcement complaints over the years, there's been a lot of activity, I think Steve could attest to this, about whether there's workable kitchens. There, at one point, there was five units and not four, which I think happened even before Mr. Hodgson was there. So, but there's been a lot, there's, in the two binders, there's a lot of mention of things that, problems in this, in this area.
One, one, one more question. You had mentioned when one of your, your clients had called and the sheriffs came and stuff, it was in the evening, and I was just sort of looking through the list and it looks like the majority of the calls are in the, at night.
You know, I don't, I didn't really look at that and I don't know. I mean, oftentimes, here's the, the thing is, we've been, we've been accused of making a lot of the calls and frankly, my sister and I, we have made very few. Most of our, and our calls that I know I've been involved in have, and, and it hasn't happened in a while, but have, we have a breezeway through here so cars can drive through. And when there was more of what I think was drug activity, and I think the, the, the record would show that at this property, people would drive through here, park here in the back, and then walk through, and then they'd leave 10 or 15 minutes later. And my sister sleeps right here, right, right on the breezeway. So she hears cars at night and we don't have a lot of our traffic that comes through real late at night. So she'd get up once in a while and so the same cars kept coming through, we'd write license plates. And if we saw them a few times either here or parked out here where the car was running and they're walking over, then we would call in license plates. But other than that, because we don't really see, we live here, so we don't see over what's going on in here. We can hear sometimes issues going on, but we really don't see. So, so we don't, frankly, don't know, you know, I can't say I know exactly. The, the one incident back in, I think it's '03 with the Molotov cocktail, when we had the SWAT team on our decks with dogs, that was, you know, even that, I didn't know till I saw the dogs and the, and the people running around our decks, the SWAT team, what was going on, so. And then, see, we also own this property and, and, and here as well, so. This used to be a part of the, part of the Falcon Lodge. And we bought this back in 2000, so.
Okay, well, is there any more questions or anything at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay. Let's see, I know Mr.'s...
Who gets the point?
Just say it on the counter there, David.
I know Mr. Siegel is here. Is there anybody else in the audience that's going to speak on this particular topic? Well, we'll give Mr. Siegel a chance first and then the other speaker.
Good morning. My name's Phil Siegel. I'm the owner of Tahoe Palanore. The only comments I, I'd like to make is, you know, we've, we've never had a problem and the brief history is, we've been in business across the street at that location for 14 years and the business has grown. When we first started, we had crosswalks across the street. You know, we could, we could just cart the, the boats across the street. As the business started growing and we started doing more work with camps and stuff like that, the crosswalks disappeared. And we entered into a negotiation at the Falcon to set up a concession there to accommodate what we were doing. I mean, I, I feel the pain that Dave Ferrari has, but it's really, it, it's nothing that, that the kayaks are doing. I mean, we operate during the day, we're done at 4:30. Never had a complaint. We operated for five years and, you know, I'm, I'm concerned. We actually, after the NITRAC committee or council meetings, I talked to Fred, the owner of the Falcon. I says, you know, I get it. I understand the frustration of that your next door neighbor and the community. And so we started working, we came up with a, with a plan to at least start making a positive move to hopefully help Dave Ferrari and the Falcon as far as cleaning the place up. You know, kayak, I mean, the, the ability to have the kayaks on that property and cleaning up that property and painting the property and filling the, the parking lot, paving it, striping it, giving a little bit more eyeball and starting to work on those rooms. Fred's committed to do that, but that's a separate, the Falcon is a separate kind of a problem. It's, it's not my problem. I mean, it's unfortunate that I'm, you know, I'm kind of on the same property, but we haven't had a problem. We operate at different times and, and, you know, I'm trying to help do what I can do to improve the property. I don't have, you know, much more to say if anybody has any questions.
Questions?
You say you're done at 4:30. What, what are your actual business hours?
Our posted hours are, are nine to five. The last kayaks go out at four. So we're usually out of there at 4:30 in the afternoon. Camps, we do the camps, we do the nonprofit stuff early in the morning. And I would, I would hope that we could continue to operate and you uphold my minor use permit that was granted.
Okay, question?
Phil, a quick question. I know where you keep your kayaks on the, on the edge of the county, right away there. Do your customers that use those kayaks park across the street or do they park in the motel per se?
We, the majority of the customers park at our store. There's, there's 23 parking spots on that property and what Steve, or Dave was mentioning, the parasail and jet ski parking, they have 11, they claim 11 spots. So there's sufficient parking on our, at our store. The past five years, we've used six part, six parking places at the Falcon. All our, with the exhibits, all our parking is, you know, we've got allocated parking for our business.
So then you're, you walk your customers over to the kayaks and then they go out from there?
The, yeah, about, I'd say 90% of all the rental customers park at our store. And we, we get some beach traffic, but the majority, you know, park at our, at our store.
Now, when you, when you take your kayaks from where you have them stored in that front corner through the water, do you go through that fenced yard? Is that how you get down there?
No, it's a direct, it's, it's public access. That, that whole, that paper street, that Brockway, that's a, for the most part, a paper street. But it's public access right to the beach. So that's, that's how we've been operating.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Maybe just for asking everybody in the audience, just take the pointer and mark down how people access from your kayaks to get to the water.
Our kayak?
Yeah, our kayak rack is right here and what they do is they go right down to the water. We have, you know, beach helpers, whatever you want to call them, to get the boats down and bring them back. But it's, it's a straight shot right from here, right straight to the water.
So, so you have helpers that help that are standing by kayaks sometimes?
Yes.
And they help your clientele go up and down?
Correct.
And they're there from open till, till closing?
Yes.
Have you had any of your kayaks stolen, any theft problems?
No. Just not in the last 14 years.
Okay, maybe I have one quick question too. It, it sounds like normally you have about 20 kayaks there, but as the minor use permit is stated, you go up to 40, is that correct or?
That's what we, yeah, we, that's what we put in for. We show parking to accommodate that based on the, on the formula.
Okay, that's based on your store or based on your store and the Falcon?
Yeah, we're, we're claiming six to eight parking spots at the, on the Falcon. And that still allows for all the units. The Falcon, when we modified, the modification to not hold rooms hostage for parking, we just moved the parking, or we show our parking at the store. But six parking spots are going to still be available at the Falcon.
Is there any questions? Well, thank you. Okay, we have one more person that raised their hand that wants to speak. Please give us your name when you come up to the microphone.
My name is Fred Hodgson. I have the Falcon Lodge in Kings Beach. And there's been a lot of comment about the operation at the Falcon. And what was mentioned was that the ratings and the quality of the operation there and also the TripAdvisor stars or points. And if you check, you'll see that the Falcon is number two in Kings Beach, a half a star below the Crown Motel. And for the people that do come to the Falcon Lodge, they're obviously very satisfied there. We have a lot of good comment and we have done recent improvements to the property. And since this issue came up, I have met with Jennifer Montgomery and she's, excuse me, she asked that, that we have like a mediation between Dave Ferrari and myself to accommodate and allow for the people to operate the kayak business because it is a positive, it brings employment and activities to the, to the area. And me and Phil get along just fine and that's, I think, the safest thing for the kayaks not to be have to carried or transported from his store to the beach, which is very inconvenient. And we're just happy that we can help each other out. And I'd like to see Kings Beach improve. The buildings are quite old and we were in a CEP project for three years. That has gone away because of the recent vote at the TRPA. Now we need to focus on how we are going to work with redevelopment in that area or try to maintain the properties for the long term and I'd like to commit to that. And I think the, the recent letter that, that Phil came up with, and I also added to that, that we intend to put the money that we get from these kinds of activities into improvement to the community. It's actually a, it's the direction that, and the revenues that will actually improve Kings Beach and make it a better place for everybody. And I understand that Dave Ferrari has the same type of operation next door and these are competitors. I hope that they can find a mutual common ground to continue working together and have this conflict go away. But that's kind of my whole statement on where things are and I, I'd like to see Kings Beach come back. We've seen in, in the recent years, the Squaw Valley and North Star and now Homewood is building a village. All these, and the Ritz Carlton, all these upscale accommodations has really put a lot of pressure on the older motels in Kings Beach. And I think that's really the cause of the occupancy levels to drop and also the rates to come more competitively lower to try to compete in this market. It's a hard time for all of us and the kayaks is a good way to offset some of this downturn and maybe turn it around. And Phil brings events, he, he brings lots of people. Now we have a bicycle thing going on this weekend and those kind of things are what Kings Beach needs to revive our aging infrastructure. If you have any questions, I, I do think that all the issues that have came up were addressed by the attorney which wrote a letter which showed the, the answers, the legal answers to all these questions. I hope that, that Phil can at least get a decision where he could operate this summer because he started back in August trying to get this rolled over for another five years and he's had a very difficult time. So I, I appreciate all Phil's patience and all of his hard work too and his, his financial contribution to make this work. Thank you.
Fred, I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if I'm working here or not. You, you commented that, you know, the bicycle thing is coming this weekend and that brings people. And I, I agree with you and I, I don't have a problem with the kayak thing. That's the kind of entertainment and thing that we're looking for at Tahoe. But I got to tell you, I drove over there yesterday and looked at your operation and that's a shamble, absolutely a shamble. And I'm sorry to have to say that, but no one's going to come to Tahoe for the bike race and come back again for the second time if we continue to look the way you look. And that's unfortunate because all of us are trying to live in that area, we're trying to make it nicer. The county is working hard to upgrade the streets. They're spending millions on Kings Beach in the next two years to make it a better place. And if we have people that are not taking care of their own private property, it's going to be all money wasted and it's not going to serve to the, the purpose that it was hoped to serve. And so I would really hope that somehow you would agree in your own heart that you've got to find a better way because, you know, if you go up there and look at those buildings, they haven't had a coat of paint in 100 years. They look, they just, the wood's going to rot right off the walls. So you've got to spend some time and effort to, on your own. I don't know if you're now making enough money on the rentals to pay to maintain it or what the problem is, but that's an economic issue and that's obviously yours. But I got to tell you, that's, that's not the way people should be conducting business if they really want to see the area improve and, and try to make it what it maybe was 50 years ago. So I would like to, I would certainly like a pledge from you that you're going to break your pick and try to improve what's going on there and... and try to improve what's going on there, and, and, you know, your relationship with Davey is your business, and I don't want to get in the middle of that, that's not my issue. But my issue is, I've been trying for fifty years to see Kings Beach improve. And it's, and we've just got to, we've got to, we've reached the point now where we have to start putting pressure on the individuals to make them want to improve their own property, or we're not going to, we're not going to get better. And we've got to do that, we've got a beautiful area and a great beach, and, and we've just got to somehow encourage these people that have these kinds of conditions to improve. And it's, and I, I just plead with you to find a way to, to, uh, make your place a showplace of some kind, you know? And I'm sorry to rag on you, I, I don't know you that well, I only know you to say hello, but I, I just, I did take the time to go look yesterday, and I, and I, I'm sympathetic to the fact that, that there's a lot of, it needs a lot of TLC right now, and I, and I, and I don't know what the county's position is, where we can go, I guess I could ask county council to explain what our options are to encourage you to do it somehow, and maybe he, Scott could explain that aspect of it, but I just, you know, I don't have a problem at all with the kayak process, but I do have, you know, I went up there and looked, and I thought, boy, there's, there's room for improvement, you know?
Thank you so much for those comments, and I totally agree with you. And we are working on a plan to, to achieve definite goals in that regard. And, uh, that's, um, the reason for the recent, uh, response to this appeal, or, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Let me kind of ask, oh, do you want to address it now, Scott, or later?
Uh, the pleasure of the commission, I was just gonna, uh, let you know that, uh, the primary enforcement mechanism is through code enforcement, but when circumstances do get so, uh, outrageous on a site where it creates a public nuisance, there are provisions wherein a government agency can come in and basically, uh, take, uh, shut down a business and take it over, and essentially operate it under receivership until those problems are, are resolved. Obviously, that's an extreme step, the county has never taken it, I know it actually has occurred in the city of Roseville, uh, where there was, uh, significant, uh, criminal activity going on in a, in an apartment building. But that's, that's what the county would seek to avoid here, because that's a rather desperate step.
Also, Scott, can't, can't you just revoke his business license? Because I'm sure he has to have a operational business license, and, and I imagine if he's got some kind of food service or whatever, environmental health is, I'm, I'm sure there's got to be four or five permits that you could start revoking if he doesn't start complying.
Sure, there's, there's a business permit, but, uh, again, in terms of the operation of the facility, the end result would be some sort of receivership where the operator is removed from the facility.
Okay, maybe I have, I have one more question, just a little bit different bent on it. But at any rate, what I'm hearing, the issue with rafting, I mean, not rafting, the paddle people is, uh, not necessarily the paddling, but the fact that there is so much law enforcement going on in this facility. And, uh, you wouldn't think that the paddlers would be the ones that would cause the law enforcement problems. And so it's a mixing of, uh, population, where you have people that are prone to have problems with law enforcement wise, and people that are there just to, uh, have recreation. I, that's what I think I'm hearing the county's issue is with this permit. So, uh, could you enlighten us a little bit on the law enforcement? Or what are the type of residents that are using the Falcon Lodge as, uh, either a residence or a place to hang out at?
Well, I'll try to, um, comment on that. The Kings Beach area in general has a high crime rate, and, um, I think that, that's reflected in the report that you've seen on the Falcon Lodge. The property, when I came, uh, just about eleven years ago originally to the property, it was in a disrepair at that time. I did spend considerable effort remodeling the insides and putting windows in the building and doing various things. Then we got involved into a CEP project, which would have destroyed the buildings and built something new. Now we're just past that phase, and we have to readdress the, uh, the direction that, that the downtown is going to go in, and we want to cooperate a hundred percent with, uh, trying to, uh, make Kings Beach a better place. And we, we've, uh, committed funds to that purpose, I hope that will...
Are you talking about the community or the Falcon Lodge?
The Falcon Lodge in particular, yes, that's our issue right now. I have built my home in, in Carnelian Bay, and I have built many buildings in the Morgan Hill, San Jose, Milpitas, uh, various places. I know how to do this kind of thing, we just have to have a, a clear direction what we're going to do.
So, uh, I guess what I'm hearing is the future of the Falcon Lodge is uncertain?
We, we could restore it to its original, uh, nineteen fifty-two values and, and make it look like a historical building, if that's what the county wants to see, or we could cooperate in a, a tear down and re, uh, rebuilt, which was, uh, proposed by, uh, uh, county back in nineteen ninety-six for revitalizing the downtown Kings Beach area. We, we want to see something happen positive in the area.
As the owner, what, what's your, uh, vision for the property?
I think the whole street should be revitalized into a new project.
Well, I'm just talking about the Falcon.
I think the Falcon is going to have a difficult time doing any kind of rebuild on its present location with all the surrounding properties in their state of affairs. Everything in that street is of the same, uh, era.
Okay.
Okay, um, do you actively yourself manage the property? Are you the onsite manager, or?
I have a point person, and right now I have two people onsite that cover the property and, and take responsibility when I'm not there.
Do they live there?
I'm, I'm normally there from about, yesterday I was there from seven thirty up until nine o'clock at night. I do pretty much all the work, and I have part-time people occasionally help me out.
When I say property manager, not necessarily maintenance, I'm talking about the person that if you have short-term people that are there that are causing problems that would evict them, or if you have, um, rental clients and stuff that, that actually actively manage if there's a problem onsite to talk to them, that, um, you know, you will go through an eviction process. If you have a long-term tenant in the back there that potentially could be doing drugs or whatever, that... I just get the impression when I look at, at all the information and stuff, you're not actively managing it. And you keep saying it's a high-crime area and stuff, I, you know, yeah, put up lights, do what it takes, have a strong person there that's willing to talk to your tenants and is not afraid to basically be an enforcer and enforce rules and regulations that I would assume you would have as just normal business practices.
I don't understand the question.
Well, I, I get the impression from reading all this and listening to all the testimony that you're not managing your properties.
I, I suppose that's what you would gather from reading that complaint. If you actually go to the property and have, uh, some interaction with the various people that come and go there, like I do, that you would have a different opinion. Some people are quite happy there. And obviously, we have a rating of three point five, and I think Dave has four as far as, um, the, uh, guest, uh, the TripAdvisor, which is a pretty good, um, reporter of, of people's values of the area.
Okay, well, I think, I think, unless there's somebody else that wants to ask a question, I think that we've probably grilled you about enough, so we appreciate your comments.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Okay, uh... Yeah, you're the, uh, you're the appellant, so, uh... So I'll, I'll grant you if you can do it fairly quickly, yeah.
I, I would just ask that you again, look at the, look at the history of, of, since two thousand and two. His business, the business license was taken away, I believe in oh-five. And, uh, you know, there was a set of conditions when it was given back in oh-six that I don't think are being met today, uh, to, to get that business license back. In terms of improving the property, the, the letter I saw that came to me that was signed by Mr. Siegel and, and Mr. Hodgson was, uh, it was to say that they would, uh, put four thousand a year into, into the property. That's about three hundred and forty dollars a month. Uh, I, I'm spending three hundred dollars a day right now to keeping our place up. I, I think four thousand a year, and you see the pictures, it's, if that's the, if that's what fixing it up is going to be, then I, uh, you know, that, that isn't going to bring it back to its original estate, or it's going to take an awful long time. There is a question on public access, uh, is across that conservancy property. I don't know if it's ever really been resolved, but that's why the other conditional minor use permit or conditional use permit has the private residence. I mean, that was the whole thing with having that access through the private residence. Otherwise, they wouldn't be, at least when we were trying to work with her on the property, it was, uh, ten thousand a year she was getting. So there is an economic reality to having these minor use permits on your, on the property for, for everybody. Um, you know, TripAdvisor, uh, you know, what his rating is, I, again, I would just say, check, check TOT that's being paid, because, and then, and then determine, uh, you, I think you should be able to have access to that. Again, I don't, okay?
Okay, I have, I have another question for you.
Sure.
Let me see, uh, what I'm unclear, do you rent kayaks also?
We, we do rent kayaks, I, um, yeah, I should have mentioned that, it's, we have a, we have the original kayaks that we bought when we started the permit, ten years ago. We do no advertising, honestly, we make about two thousand a year on that operation. If it went away, it's mostly a convenience for our guests, we don't advertise it, we have not. Um, I, I talked to actually, uh, Mr. Siegel the other day about, you know, just, I mean, he just mentioned to me that those kayaks are really not at all the standard. And honestly, we send people to Phil a lot because we have people that want to paddleboard. So there in no way are we, we're in the motel business over there, and there's in no way is this some kind of competition thing as far as kayaks go, because like I say, we're not making any money at it. We, we haven't ever, and, um, we're, we don't even work it very hard, to be honest with you. So, um, if not, if we had been working it hard, we'd have new kayaks, and we would, we'd be, because the kayak business honestly has changed a lot since our kayaks were purchased, uh, ten years ago, so...
Okay, maybe one more quick, uh, just comment at this point, and I guess then I'll bring it back to the commission and we can discuss it further, but to me, the, uh, even though the condition of the property seems to be, uh, real bad. The problem that, uh, with the minor use permit is the mixing of the types of, uh, users. Criminals versus, uh, people that just come to Lake Tahoe to recreate. So at least, uh, in my view, that's probably the issue that we're going to focus on, just for your information.
I think it's an issue our family's focused on. Once we did Freedom of Information and found out what's, what is going on there, I think, uh, liability-wise, it becomes an issue for us, because our guests are, you know, we're bringing thousands of people to our property every year, and, and if something were to happen, I think somebody's going to point the finger at us, like, you, you should have warned us, or... So I think we, we're all wrestling with that issue.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
I have a, have a question of staff, I may, uh, the applicant here is showing as Tahoe Paddle and Oar. But does the use permit go to the, to them, or does it go to the property owner?
Tahoe Paddle and Oar is the applicant.
Is the applicant?
Use permit does stay with the property.
Stays with the property?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
The Falcon Lodge property. Well, I, I, is it appropriate to make comments now, or is there any more questions?
Oh, we're open to comments as a commission, we, in fact, we need to, uh, find a way to, the way through this, please.
Well, I, um, I, I read this material when it first came to us, what, a couple of months ago, and then we didn't have the meeting until today, and so it was a good review, looking at it again, but, um, and something was mentioned that, you know, this is a, to have a, a use permit on a property, it's a privilege, it's not a right, because else they wouldn't even be here today, asking for it. And I think the property owner does have responsibility to maintain a property if they're going to ask for additional rights or privileges to be granted to them. And that's where I see the big issue, where I think the Paddle and Oar, I think they've done a good job, they occupy one little corner, but I, I still think it's, it's on the, and that's why I asked the staff about the, who does it really go to, it goes to the property owner, uh, not the applicant. And I think it's incumbent upon a property owner to, to maintain the property in some fashion to ask for additional uses. That being said, I don't know if there's any, um, mechanism where we could approve something and have a, a condition in there on the property owner that certain improvements would have to be made by a certain date, or else it's rescinded. I, I'm not sure of the mechanism there, but, um, I think we need to have that in place, something like that, or else I don't see where the, where the use permit should be granted. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Okay, any other comments or thoughts?
I, I mean, I agree that it is a privilege to get the conditional use permit, and would certainly like to see the property owner keeping up with it, or, you know, setting the pace even for the standards of the neighborhood, but one of the questions I asked early on was are there any open code violations or, or violations pending with the Falcon Lodge that aren't satisfied? And I believe the answer I got was no, which puts him on an even keel with everybody else on the street as far as the county's concerned. It's an aesthetics issue, and as frustrating as that may be for the neighbors, and, and I understand it, I don't know that that puts us in a position to hold the applicant and, and the, the property owner hostage for, for additional improvement.
And I don't think it was just aesthetics, I think the police reports speak for themselves.
Well, and I understand that, and going through these stack here, less than half of them actually occurred during the business hours in which Tahoe Paddle and Oar is conducting business.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
Are, are after-hours, but, but there again, um, it's, it's, they're, they're, they're not, they have not been cited for any, or, you know, don't have any current open unsatisfied citations for their business operation.
I, I sort of look at it, though, even a little different than that. I'd be a hundred percent with you, Rich, if, if it was the Falcon Lodge renting out, you know, the kayaks and stuff, where they, they had the variance to do the operations themselves versus, you know, another businessman that's, doesn't have any problems, has not caused any problems, seems to maintain his business and operate it in a, in a good way. And so we're putting him out of business, and it still doesn't impact the Falcon Lodge. I mean, all you're doing is just taking, taking, uh, independent businessmen and putting him out, and the only impact maybe is, I, I don't know with their financial agreement, you know, what kind of lease for the property or whatever he has on it. And that's what just really gives me heartburn on this. I mean, I, I think it needs to be targeted at the Falcon Lodge, because everything I've heard today doesn't have anything to do with the Paddle and Oar and with the kayaks. It has a hundred percent to do with the Falcon Lodge, and, and, you know, how do you, how do you work that? So it's almost, I understand it runs with the property and it's a right.
I'm ready for a motion if somebody, and then we can discuss more if we want.
I'd like to have a little bit more discussion, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and that is that I'm in agreement with, with Ken and, and Richard. This isn't a referendum on the Falcon Lodge. I'm wondering if we're not missing something here by not having code enforcement out there a little bit more in detail. And, you know, maybe it's not appropriate, Larry, but I sure agree with your comments, something needs to be done here. But is this the mechanism to do it? We're making the Tahoe Paddle and Oar a whipping boy for the Falcon Lodge, and yet, as a resident of this county, I want to do everything that I... And yet, as a resident of this county, I wanna do everything that I can to encourage businesses up in Tahoe. And the comment was made during staff report that they couldn't, they wouldn't make a recommendation that we make a finding that the safety is not impaired by having kayak operations at that location. On the other hand, when I balance the safety of the individuals crossing the street and moving the kayaks over on vehicles and all this kinda thing, when I balance all of those, I have a better feeling for the safety of the people during the daylight hours at the kayak rental on the beach than I would in having them go across, across the street. So, I'm, I'm tending to want to deny the appeal. But I also wanna discuss individual conditions that are, that are mentioned in here. And I would rather us cross the bridge that we're either in agreement or not in agreement that we're going to grant the appeal before we get into the individual discussions, because it may be moot.
Well, that's the reason I was, go ahead.
Well, let me, let me throw something on the table. I, it's, it's, it's very frustrating, because if this was just a short-term thing, and there was a few cars parked there, and there were junk cars or something that was easy to fix, this is a more complicated issue than that, unfortunately. And I guess what I'm gonna suggest is that we think of granting the paddle and oar their extension for one year. With the idea that during that year, that, that as time permits, the county staff can go out and do an evaluation of the property to see if people are living in substandard conditions or what things need to be done. And then in a, a year from now, if it has to come back for extension or reapproval, we'll have a really good assessment of not just a neighbor, but of our own county staff, of what the condition of the facilities are, and if there are any violations, and if there are more police activity between now and then. And we could create a, a capsule of activity for a year that would make it pretty easy to understand. Because I was, I was prepared to grant the, the appeal, but right now I, I say, okay, I, it doesn't look like I have everyone's support in doing that. I would like to at least make it a very minimal one-year approval, so we don't put the guy out of business. But in that one year, let's expect something in return, you know? See some improvement in the, in the operation, and check the facilities to make sure that it's up to standards.
Larry, that's why, that's why I was, that's why I was making my previous comment.
I'm sure I didn't mean that.
No, no, I know, that's okay. Go, go, I'm not calling you. No, no, that's why I was making my previous comment. If there was some kinda condition, when you're kind of a, kinda outlining a process, but a condition that we could put on, and the condition could be just come back in a year and show us what you've done. I mean, it doesn't have to be too complicated, but that's what I was getting around to. And I agree with Ken and everybody that we, we, we have to encourage people like paddle and oar that don't, don't seem to be causing any kind of a problem, especially when they got access on this side of the highway versus the other side. But on the other hand, I, I think the use permit does go with the property. I think it's incumbent upon us to look at that. And so I think a process of a year with some conditions and come back with more detail would be, would be some kind of a process I'd be in favor of.
Okay, so, I think we're at a point, now this is really just a, either support or deny the appeal. But I'm assuming that we can put conditions on it?
We can, we can change the conditions.
Yeah, the, your attachment A is actually the findings and the conditions as recommended by the zoning administrator, which we appealed. So, if you choose to grant the appeal, you can work off Exhibit A.
What I'd like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, is there seems to be a consensus that we want to deny the appeal but grant some limitations. And if I could, let's go ahead and discuss some of the individual conditions that are concerned to me and perhaps to the commission.
Okay.
And I'm specifically looking at attachment A that Scott just referenced.
You wanna, you wanna do this as a motion?
Well, then we'll incorporate all the, the conditions and the, and the recommendation or the motion all in one. I think we can do it that way.
Are you gonna do that now, or you discuss it first?
Later. The one I specifically, I have a couple that I wanted to ask about. Number 11, Steve, has to do with limiting the motel use to 10 rental units. How many units do they have now?
I believe there's 20 units at the hotel.
Is that reasonable to request that the owner of the motel cut off half of his units and not rent them out?
That was one of the conditions that was placed on the approval by the zoning administrator.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I said that was one of the conditions that was placed on the approval by the zoning administrator.
Okay. And traffic fees, number 12. He has to pay $9,500 worth of traffic fees. I have his little kayak shop out there.
That was based on vehicle trips. And we did work out an agreement with Mr. ...
Siegel.
Siegel, I'm sorry. And he's, he was paying half within a certain period of time. In fact, he's already given us a check, which we're holding pending the outcome of this appeal. And then half is paid at a later time. So if I can help you with that, I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay. And then number 14, Larry, was the one that you were going after, where we could make this approval for a period of one year, and then come back to the commission for reconsideration at that point. Is that what you had in mind?
And I would like a, a, as part of that condition, a report by our staff as to the condition for safety and zoning and everything.
Yeah, so rather than a permissive review, what you want is it to come back here as a matter of course for reconsideration by the commission, whether the staff has determined that they are or not complying with the conditions, we want to see them back here in a year?
Yes.
Okay.
So the five years goes away.
Okay. Okay, what I will do then is, unfortunately, I don't have any recommendations on findings for approval. So I will recommend, Mr. Chairman, and move that the planning commission deny the appeal, that we make the findings required by SEQA, that we incorporate the conditions of approval that were in attachment A to our staff report, specifically those found by the, yeah, zoning administrator, with striking condition number 11. And modifying condition 14 to read that this minor use permit is for a one-year period, and it shall be required to come back to the planning commission within a year for, for further review.
Just one, one question on that. On, since it was for a five-year period, on those fees to paddle and oar, is that based on traffic for a one-year or for the five-year impact?
Fees are collected at only one time, and when this use permit was first applied for, it was determined to be a temporary use, so we didn't collect them at that time. And so basically, because now it's being extended, it's gone beyond two years of what we temporary would call, or would classify as a temporary use. But because of this extended period of time, we are now recognizing it as more of a permanent use. So now we're catching up and saying, okay, now traffic fees really need to be collected.
Okay, that, that answers.
Okay.
I have, I have a question of staff, just a clarification real quick.
At one point, there was an increase in the number of kayaks. Is that part of this application, or how is that close with that?
That was granted.
That does.
That was number one.
Yeah, so that's granted.
Yeah, that's correct. That was part of the...
That's number, that's number one. That's still part of the condition.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, after all that, that's my motion.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Staff, do you have that? You're clear? And the condition of the facility?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, at this point, is there any more comments or questions?
I'd just like to make a comment that I, I, I think, at least I'm in, in agreement with your recommendation for the denial, because based on the findings of the, you know, that you had there. So, but I think we're, we came up with a good compromise here.
Comments? The fees, I would like to see if we couldn't hold those off for another year.
Traffic fees?
They're pretty steep if we're just gonna give him a one-year extension. And then the other thing is, is I think we need to be specific as to what we're expecting of the Falcon Lodge. I mean, this is an awful blank check we've just written on his behalf to say, fix it up. To whose satisfaction, and what does that involve? It's, it's a pretty open-ended thing to come back in a year. My, my guess is, is that his neighbor still isn't gonna be in love with him at that point in time. And, and so I'd, I'd like to, to be more specific. I, I like where it's going, I like the encouragement, but, but we need some specifics.
In answer to your two questions, the first one is, with respect to the fees, I don't think this commission has the authority to waiver vary the fees. Scott, do you have a comment?
Well, I think in light of the fact that this has already gone on for five years, and this would be a sixth year, the fee is actually, in theory, delinquent at this point, because it was not, it's not a temporary use. So it should've been, in theory, paid several years ago.
And the second part, with respect to what's gonna change between now and then? I don't know. Are we just kicking the can down the road a little bit, maybe? But it does provide a certain amount of incentive to both parties, Mr. Siegel to get on the owner of the Falcon Motel, and he himself to, to make these improvements, to where we won't have quite the list of, of infractions that we've seen from the police, we won't have the photos of the trash perhaps. Maybe the economy will change and things will be booming, and we'll have something different there, but...
I just, I would hate to see him go to some extent, only to find out 12 months from now, the close, but no cigar. I mean, if an exterior paint job is what we're looking for, if, if, if we have some specifics that we need to see in order to be happy, I think those need to be listed. So he's got something, one, to budget for, and two, to actually know, if I do this, I get my approval.
I'm hesitant to provide any particular list of items that we want to see improved, because that will be done and nothing more. What I'd rather see is just the generic, clean it up in accordance with standards that you and the community think prevail in that area, and let him attempt to comply with it.
Manage the people.
And it is somewhat subjective. It's the nature of the beast.
Okay, with that, I think I'm hearing that the person that made the motion is not considering changing the motion.
No amendments have been offered.
Yeah, so at this point, then, I guess we could call for the question. Seems like we may have a little bit of disparity on the commission, so I'll go ahead and call for a roll call. And so this would be for denial of the appeal and the conditions?
As modified.
As modified.
Mr. Brenton?
Yes.
Mr. Rukuti?
Yes.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Oh, I'll support that.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Okay, well, thank you. We've resolved that one. I think we, probably the next one is gonna be kind of a long one. So we better take about a five-minute break. So, if you could bear with us in the audience for about five minutes, and we'll be right back with you.
Yes.
Okay, folks, if I could have your attention, let's go ahead and get the meeting started. Okay, we'll be looking at the Timberline project next, which is here in Auburn. And for that, we have George Rosasco, who first off will make a staff presentation on what this project includes. So George, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Not very well.
Huh. Okay. Anyways, my name is George Rosasco. I'm the supervising planner of Platte County. I'm also the lead planner on the Timberline project. So everyone understands where the project is at. It, it's basically across the street from where we are right now.
Hey, George, can you come up to the podium?
Really?
Yeah.
All right.
The fact of the matter is, I think I'm hearing you, but I'm not certain, and I wanna make sure that I can hear what you have to say. And if I can't hear you, perhaps the audience can't either.
It'll just make you keep it a little shorter.
True. True, it, it'll be much shorter now. Anyways, what I was saying is, so, so everyone understands where this project is in relationship to where we are today. We are in a building right here. This is Bell Road. This is Richardson. Richardson comes right here, so we're on the opposite side. So this project goes all the way over here to the ARD property, which is this property that's mentioned in the staff report. And goes all the way over to where Meadowbrook Drive is. And over here, I believe, I always get it wrong, I can never remember if it's Sunset or Sunrise. Sunset. I know it was a sun of some type, I just didn't know which one. So with that in mind, the proposal is actually for 858 residential unit retirement community. Also, as part of the proposal, there is the ARD parcel to the north, which will have a loop trail and recreation of wetlands for lots of onsite wetlands onsite. That is going to be done under separate, separate permit. So everyone understands the project. At the commercial core, these would be commercial buildings. And as part of the unit count, there's 78 apartments on top of these buildings, some on this. They don't go any further than this line because this is the airport overflight zone where apartments and residential density is, is not allowed. So you have commercial buildings with apartments, you have medical offices, you have a storage yard, you have commercial rec and fitness buildings right here. And then as you go over, when you go up Richardson, you have an entry into the retirement community here and a main entrance here. These are independent living units through here with common buildings. These are duplexes. I believe these are single-family houses, smaller single-family houses, larger single-family houses, single-family, more duplexes, more independent living. It's important to note that these aren't assisted living because that wouldn't be permitted in this overflight zone. It's independent living. So the entitlements necessary for this project to go forward are general plan amendment, rezoning, zoning text amendments, two use permits. The use permit is for the multifamily on this site. And the other use permit is for the creation of the loop trail and wetlands on the ARD, I should say Auburn Recreation District property, shouldn't use the abbreviation. You'll also have signage variances, variances for backing into the street, private street contained in here. Normally you're not allowed to back into private streets, but since there's anticipated to be a low amount of traffic, there is on-street parking that will, will back out. Parking variances, entryway variances, because you're going to have an entryway in the front setback here, here, and here. A height variance for the fence around the storage yard, which would be a fence with landscaping around here. Probably the biggest issue that I wanted to go over with you quickly is the land use issue with regard to this. When you look in the Auburn Bumming Community Plan, it talks about what, what this site was anticipated to be. And it's very similar to the project that's proposed before you, before you today. It was envisioned as, not a lot and block subdivision, it was, it was envisioned as a mixed-use area with a mix of commercial, office professional, and living units. It is a very different type of development than anywhere else in North Auburn, or for that matter, in most of the unincorporated area. We don't have a lot of mixed-use development. It's very difficult to make it fit within the guidelines that we have with regard to our zoning ordinance and that sort of thing. The reason it was envisioned as a mixed-use area was that it's close proximity to recreation facilities, to shopping facilities, to the hospital. And, and especially now, it seems more appropriate to be an age-restricted community in the fact that it's, it's near all the services that people in, in an age-restricted community would need. It's near the hospital, it's near the doctor offices. They're gonna put in any V-lanes that will, will take you down to the adjacent shopping areas. And, and those are really the reasons to, to make the project work the way it needs to work in today's world, that would be the reason for the GPA and the, and the rezoning. There are several other issues, which I don't think I'm gonna go into because we'll probably go into them in depth later. But the other high points would be about, there's issues with regard to fire flow. When I say issues, not really issues, questions. There's been questions about affordable housing, questions about the airport overflight zone, questions about mask grading and visual resources. So instead of going into those, I'd rather just answer any questions that you might have, so I can cut right to the heart of the issue. Does anyone have any questions? Or do you want me to go over them in, in general?
Well, I think if you could go through them just a little bit, you know, particularly like the mask grading, I know that's gonna be an issue.
Sure, I can go over them.
What does that mean and the airport, you know, I just heard you say that, that the, where you're gonna have the independent living versus the assisted living, but that's outside of the airport zone.
There, there is no assisted living.
I know, but you said that it wouldn't be permitted in the airport zone?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be permitted anywhere on this site, only independent living.
Because of the airport?
Because of the airport overflight zone. And, and to the east of that dash line, you're not allowed to have residential units. Although, the strange thing is, is there's a lot of residential right next door. There's retirement communities, there's an Alzheimer's clinic. Sienna Healthcare. Those things aren't normally allowed in that area. They are allowed because it's a zone of exemption that was put into place when the airport land use plan went into effect because those things already existed. So they created this little block, which is essentially the eastern property line of this, of this property. I have to get my water. So with that, with regard to fire flow, the project that's proposed is not have adequate fire flow right now. NID is supposed to come through and rebuild their main line down Highway 49 and up Bell Road, which will provide adequate fire flow. And that's supposed to happen this summer. If that doesn't happen, there are all, are, there are other alternatives. One would be that they can build the buildings to a much higher standard of fire resistance so that the fire flow that they have now would be adequate. The other option would be onsite storage, like they did at Home Depot. However, in my discussions with Cal Fire, that is the least likely scenario under which this project will go. The bottom line with regard to fire flow is that regardless of what they do, before anything's built, they'll have to get a will serve letter from Cal Fire that they're okay with it. With regard to affordable housing, there's been questions, does this project have affordable housing? It does not. There's no requirement for affordable housing either in the Auburn Bumming Community Plan or a housing element. There is some affordable housing in the sense it'll have apartments that aren't age-restricted, the 78 apartments I talked about. So they will be more affordable, but it doesn't meet the definition of affordable housing. With regard to the airport overflight zone, I've already touched on it. The line where residences aren't allowed to the east of that dash line, residential uses are allowed. This has already gone before. The Platte County Transportation Planning Commission, who has looked at this, has said that this project complies. With regard to mask grading, the applicant is proposing that the site be mask graded. And when I say mask graded, that means that they will go through and grade it all at one time. I can tell you that the site is relatively flat. What would happen is, I, I think probably the highest spot is probably around here. There's a little hill over here that's about 15 feet. That would be taken down and it would be pushed around the site so you get a level. It would be balanced. The dirt would be, be balanced on site. The applicant's proposed it for two reasons. One, because they can do it all at once and they can balance the dirt onsite without, without exporting or importing dirt. The other thing is the air pollution control ran a model that said mask grading the site all at once would reduce air pollution from earth-moving equipment. It's important to note, though, that the mask grading was not placed as a mitigation measure in environmental impact report. It was just one method that you could reduce air pollution. There's been some questions about visual resources and the height of the buildings. The applicant has actually, I believe, agreed to reduce, I can't think of the buildings off the top of my head right, right at the moment, but they're in this general area a little bit. The masking study actually showed that you would lose some of the local views, some of the lower foothill views when you look out across the site, like maybe towards Christian Valley and the Bell Road area. However, you would still see the Sierras, and it was deemed to be less insignificant. I think those are most of the probably issues that I've heard about, unless you have any questions.
Maybe just one more. Project does include some phasing. I guess you don't know the timeline, but it'll be a long time, short time, or what?
Well, the project actually has a life of, of 13 years. The possibility of 13 years, a little bit less, a little bit more on the first go-round, depending on how the phases go. The project could be built out in as many as 54 phases. There's 54 proposed lots. Got me on my game, I don't have my clicker with me. I have to get my water. I think, let me go through here, I think, oh, yes. So those heavy dark lines, those are proposed possible lots, and they could also go as phases. So the way the project has been set up is that the applicant can do any of those lots, and he can either subdivide them or just do the improvements. We have done an improvement matrix, and there's actually, I'm not gonna get into that too much because that's more engineering and surveying domain. Basically, what it says is regardless of wherever you go on this site, you have to do the improvements that were necessary. So if you wanted to start over here and do these smaller lots with single-family residential homes, that you would have to do all the improvements, you know, to get out. So we do have a phasing to, to address all that. There is the potential that this could be any version of 54 lots. There is even some thought that, the original thought was that this would be one giant lot, probably with the exception of the commercial that is to the east of Richardson. But the rest of it could actually be constructed all as, as one giant lot. It would probably be done in phases, the actual construction and the improvements would be done, but they might not be on separate lots. Did that make sense?
I think kind of, like...
I think I kinda lost you there, huh?
Like Richardson Road Drive, that can be constructed right off the bat, or is that gonna wait for a while?
No, the dedication would usually be fairly early, but as you move along, it would be constructed in phases. I don't know the exact timing of it. Engineering and surveying could, could give you more, more light on that, and they will talk after I talk. But it, we've done the matrix in such a way that all the improvements that are needed, infrastructure improvements that are needed for each thing that's constructed, will be constructed with that phase.
Oh, okay, I see.
It's sort of like a flow chart. If you do this, then you gotta do all of this. So wherever you go on that property, we have essentially a, a, a phasing matrix.
Okay. Now, the EIS had a phased map, Phase 1, 1A, 2, 3, 4.
Right.
You're describing something different, though.
Yeah, the original environmental review talked about, for the environmental purposes, it talked about four phases, which as the project progressed, really wasn't what the applicant wanted to do. The environmental impacts, however, are no, are no different. So don't confuse that the environmental impacts will change because we have more phases than less in the environmental review. It was just analyzed in a bigger chunk at one time. So, yes.
George, whether he does this in one phase or 54, there's still a, a 13-year timeline to...
There's a, well, because it's, if, if he does phase maps, he gets extensions as he goes along, up to probably 13 years, if it's done correctly. There's a possibility of, of extensions of time beyond that, which I believe are five years, I believe. So it, I mean, conceivably with extensions, maybe 21 years. 13 years, probably something a little bit around 13, depending on how the phasing happens, because it won't probably hit exactly, so it could be 11 to 13.
Okay, is that kind of it? You guys, any questions? Good? Okay, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Okay, project manager, would you like to come forward and make a few comments?
Sure, thank you. I'm John Margowski with Western Care Construction. Wish to thank the commission, staff, and the audience for attending today. As you may be aware, the first baby boomers turn 65 this year. And over the next 20 years, the California senior population will increase from about 4.5 million today to 9 million in year 2030. So there will be, and is currently, a growing need for reliable, quality senior housing. And we believe the Timberline at Auburn community will provide such housing. Some of, in addition to providing the needed senior, or meeting the senior housing demand needs, we'll also be obviously constructing the project, which upon full build-out will, we will have created 600 full-time jobs. And, and that does not include the hundreds and hundreds of construction jobs over the 10 years of the project, or however long it takes for the phasing to occur. And, and with that, I just, I'll probably answer questions as time goes on. I have the architect, Bruce McPherson with PDA with me as well, that we can answer questions as, as time goes on. But at this point, I just wanna say thank you and leave it at that, so...
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open the floor to the public, and so I need to know how many people... And so I need to know how many people are desiring to speak. It looks like quite a few, so I'm going to have just a request for each of you, that you hold your comments to three minutes. And we'll have some lights up here that go on. There's a yellow light that lets you know you're getting close and a red light that says that you're done. I know there's a couple that have asked that they can share some other people's time. You know, I'll go ahead and grant it to those two individuals as long as they hold their comments under about ten minutes. And so I guess with that, if, if somebody makes a comment that you were going to make, then, you know, if you feel like you have to come forward and give us your name and say that you're making the same comment that somebody else made, but make it real short, that'll save us time, rather than going through the full context of that comment that's already been presented. So with that, you know, what I'd like to do is maybe kind of start over on this side and kind of queue up so that we don't have a lot of time in between speakers. When you come up to the microphone, give us your name and your address. And with that, looks like we have our first speaker. So step forward, Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Jones. I live in Auburn and I'm here to support the project. It's a good thing for the quality of life to let people know they can live their entire life in Placer County. The affordable housing or the senior housing that you're proposed, your staff has agreed to, is going to be an asset. It's going to allow families to stay united, people to continue to have their community ties, and I think it's an excellent way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Todd Warner and I live at forty-eight sixty Gray Fox Lane in Auburn. Can I get the pointer from somebody?
I want to make sure I gave you one with batteries.
My wife Martha is handing out a one sheet summary of some comments. I live right about there. We moved in almost six years ago to the day today into this area. It's a beautiful area and I did a tremendous amount of research when we moved in on this ninety-four acre parcel. And when I did that research, I discovered that forty-four acres, pretty much this whole area right in here, is zoned five homes to the acre. That is the current zoning right now. I also did research on the Auburn Bowman Community Plan and I discovered that, yes, it is, was done in ninety-four, I think, and it does call for mixed use. But in my wildest dreams, I had no idea that that mixed use would mean that there's going to be a three-story apartment building four hundred feet from our property. Four hundred feet from our property. I am the world's worst golfer and I can even hit a golf ball four hundred feet with one shot. And so the housing in this area up here is single-family, five to an acre. The housing in this area is single-family, five to an acre. The housing in this fam, to my knowledge, is single-family, five to an acre. And we are going to be talking about putting three-story apartment buildings four hundred feet from our property. It's going to, it's going to lower our property values and it is going to ruin our views. And I relied on the county of Placer and the, and the, and the planning commission to protect our investment when we bought five years ago. So that is number one. Number two, this project calls for duplexes right in this area here and a road to be built along the, the north side of the property. It's surrounded on both sides by single-family residences. When, when I anticipated mixed use, I anticipated the taller buildings and the duplexes to be down closer to, to Bell Road. And so I am totally in favor of this project. I think we need it. I'm a, I'm a sixty-two years old, I'm a, I'm a junior, senior myself. We need this type of development and I'm running out of time here. So I think we need to move the duplexes to the south. I think we need to worry about the, the danger to residents who are living right on the edge of the overflight area. And I think that the trail access area would be an area of congregation since there is a trailhead that goes right to that, right to that spot. And so I would favor moving the duplexes to the south, moving the three-story buildings to the south closer to Bell Road and preserving the integrity of the residential area. And the last thing is the mass grading. In my opinion, that is a polite term for bulldozing ninety-four acres and scraping it off and leaving that open for approximately thirteen years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
My name is Bill Radakowitz and I live at thirty-five eighty Deer Ridge Lane in the Deer Ridge subdivision. My concern with this development is that I feel the developer really has not done his due diligence with regards to notifying the property owners out there what the plans are for this development. I realize the law only requires that he notify the people within three hundred feet, but there's a large number of people outside that will be affected by this development and, and they haven't been notified about the density that's going on here or the development itself, the details of the development. The airport hasn't been notified. I spoke with the airport manager and he's here today. And they haven't been consulted about this development. He hasn't had any information on it until I brought it to him yesterday. There's an extreme amount of high density going on here. You're taking an area, I've got a map here and I don't know if you can bring it up or not, it's, it's figure five showing the existing and the proposed zoning for this development. And there you go. You can see...
Wait a minute, that's the land use, hold on a sec.
That's it. You can see what the, on the left is what the zoning is at the present time. In the center section, well, I guess I can use this thing possibly, if I can figure out how to turn it on. This area here is, is five units to the acre. This is all open space here. This is ag here. This is the, the Auburn Recreation District property that abuts Deer Ridge. This property is all Deer Ridge and through here. This property down here, I have no problem with, it's close to Bell, where it's, where it should be. But they're converting all this into eight hundred and, I believe it's eight hundred and fifty-eight, uh, living units. And that's a far cry from what the zoning is at the present time. It's going to have a tremendous impact on the entire community. And I think that all needs to be taken into consideration, along with the mass grading and the tree cutting. The massive size and density of this development, I think, needs to be pared down. And I, I'm fully in agreement that it should eventually be developed. And I have no problem with the kind of development that he's got in mind, I just feel like the density is way too much for this area. As a matter of fact, one of the ladies, last night we had a meeting, said that she's got, you know, cows and pigs and all kinds of livestock right up against this development and it just doesn't fit. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
My name is Ivan Carnesius. I'm the airport manager for the Auburn Municipal Airport, about one mile to the east of this proposed development. I'm also an airport consultant, an airport engineer, registered civil engineer in the state of California, and a business owner. And the membership chairman of the Auburn Airport Business Park Association, which consists of about two hundred or more acres of businesses and a hundred or more business owners in and around the airport. I want to address a few points in here that I think could be easily overlooked or have been omitted from the reports here, just to bring it to everybody's attention so that the commission can make a really good decision about what to do with this property. I want to leave out the emotion and my personal beliefs and just give you some facts that I've garnered from what I have here. First of all, let me say that the airport is an economic engine to this area. It's extremely valuable, both directly and indirectly. The CHP operates, operates one of nine operational units out of our airport, which covers a hundred-mile radius. They have two helicopters and, and one or two aircraft that fly out of our airport constantly on search and rescue missions, accident missions, and other kinds of things that you see the CHP flying around. We have the Placer County Sheriff operating out of our airport with one or two helicopters and a twin-engine aircraft doing similar kind of operations. PG&E has recently taken up operations out of our airport. They moved themselves out of the city of Auburn. They are how the people get up to the Bear Creek blowout to get maintenance people up there to first take a look and estimate what it costs to fix things like that and even take maintenance people up there or if someone needs a part. These helicopters fly these parts out to these PG&E sites that are all over the foothills. They fly out of this airport right here. You use, you lose your electrical power or you lose your irrigation water. A major part of what goes on to fix things with PG&E is going to occur out of the municipal airport. We have helicopter training that goes on at our airport. In the last few years in California, there have probably been fifty or more airports that have shut down, but probably two hundred and fifty heliports that have gone and been constructed in the state of California. We're going to see more and more helicopter operations. We've got baby boomers getting old and just the other day where I lived in Lake of the Pines, a lady was playing golf and was med flown out of the golf course to a hospital. So helicopter flying is here to stay for a while. We have flight training going on at the airport. It's a small operation, but we have future airline pilots being trained there. We have large businesses at the airport that both use and do not use the airport directly. One of the biggest ones that uses the airport directly has five aircraft, five corporate aircraft. Their corporate headquarters are at the airport and some of you may be familiar with flyers, gas stations that are all over the region. You may not be familiar with the corporate diesel operations that they have going all over the state of California and in Nevada, but their headquarters are out of our industrial airport. In addition to that, we have people in the real estate business that have corporate aircraft on the airport, hanged there, that take care of real estate business. We also have doctors, of course, and other corporations. We have all kinds of aircraft. Most of the aircraft that we have there are piston-driven, single-engine planes. We have a few twin-engine planes and we also have turboprop aircraft. Now, I'd like to distinguish what that is. A turboprop aircraft is a jet aircraft that has a prop attached to it. Now, the significance of that is, is that it can operate in a short field. We have a short-field airport of four thousand feet or less with regard to development around the airport. That's an important thing to remember. We occasionally get jet aircraft into, regular jet aircraft, I mean, as opposed to turboprop aircraft. We occasionally get jet aircraft in there. Now, these last two kinds of aircraft that I mentioned are the kinds of aircraft that corporations are going to use in the future. They're, they're going to use...
Can I interrupt just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you know, as far as everything that you have at the airport, that's significant, but you know...
I'm done with that.
Oh, if you could focus on...
I will get...
The project.
I'm going to get to that right now. Thank you very much. I get excited about what happens at the airport and I apologize. I don't want to bore anybody, but I'm just laying the background here. People like Sam Costco, whoever, they're going to fly out of our airport. There are many corporations that will not locate unless there's an airport there. I'm just trying to express the value of the airport, the fact that we've taken FAA grants and have assured the FAA that the airport will remain. Now, with regard to compatibility, there's, could you put up the first picture that you had up there, the one that shows the airport curve? The, I think it was page one in the thing. And may I use your Death Star laser, please?
You have one.
Where's that at? Did I cover it up?
Covered it up.
Oh, good.
Yeah, please...
The one that's, the colored picture.
Yeah, if I could get you to make your comments kind of abbreviate or make it fast.
Right, I'll make it fast. Okay, this line here is not a boundary line. There are two zones here and I just want to show you, everybody here, a big picture of what we're talking about. The, they, both, both sides of this are part of the airport compatibility zones. This is a bigger picture of it. And what you're looking at here is this line here that separates C one from C two, right here and here. And this property falls right in, you know, right in a zone. And I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of what that means. Whereas most of the traffic's going to be in the inside area, we're still going to have traffic in this area here and there's going to be annoyance concerns. And that's really what I want to address. I want to address what is going to, not, what's going to be here. The EIR does a really good job of addressing what's here, but I don't think it does a good enough job to address what's not here. And the two things I want to make sure that everybody's aware of is it's not addressing those nine hundred people that are proposed to be living there in a few years and it's not addressing where the airport could possibly be in a few years. That airport could be a bigger airport in a few years. Granted, it most likely won't be, but it's very possible that it could have even more operations than it has. Right now, I suspect it has a hundred and fifty to two hundred operations a day operating out of that airport. And this particular zone that you're talking about here, although it allows residential uses, it's recommended by the state land use planning guide that children's schools, large daycare centers, hospitals, and nursing homes be avoided in that area.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm confused and my confusion comes from the fact that I believe, and George, you can help me, didn't the Airport Land Use Commission meet and consider this matter?
Yes, they did. They actually made comments.
Don't you sit on that commission?
No.
Doesn't a representative from the airport sit on that commission?
Um, no.
But they found it to be compatible, did they not?
They made some generic statements in here that are in your report. And they actually said that this zone C two is potential annoyance associated with aircraft over flights. And then they went on to say in their comments that should future residents not be notified of the potential for overflights, a potentially significant impact to the future operations of the airport could occur. That's what they said. So I'm going to skip a lot of things here and just go on to, to close out by saying that I think the thing that I'm most concerned about is, first of all, the people that would be living in this community. Now, just to the east of this community is the Rock Creek Mobile Home Park. And I get a call from a nice lady there probably every day and I can see that community is about a hundred people and this is going to be nine hundred people.
Coming in, going out, directly over the top of me, what's all night long?
You know, we can't, we can't really hear that, it's coming in too loud.
Give it just a second, it'll throw up.
All night long. So, I mean, it's like, what's going on over there?
This was just recorded two days ago.
The weather is so bad, it's just they have to fly that low, straight over this house where they're not supposed to be. And all they're doing is going round and round and round. They need to be flying.
What she's experienced is...
Could, could I have your attention, please?
Yes.
Your presentation has gone on way too long.
How long have I been?
At any rate, you've been here probably ten minutes or more.
I apologize.
And you had three, but at any rate, I think...
Can I just show you one more thing?
I think your bottom line is the, the noise on the residents in this neighborhood, is that your bottom line?
That's my bottom line, but I'd like to just illustrate real quickly in a half a minute exactly why this is occurring.
What's occurring?
Why, why this perception is occurring and why it will not go away and why it... Why, why this perception is occurring and why it will not go away and why it will be equal-
The perception of what?
Of the noise by the people to the east of this area is occurring and why it will occur at this new area that you're proposing here. And, and, and it's just simple, simple operations of what goes on at the airport. And if I could just be given thirty seconds to show you with this little red arrow exactly what's happening here.
What is it, the left-hand turn on takeoff?
No, it's four things, real quick.
Okay, make it, make it, no more than thirty seconds.
Okay, coming in from down here is the forty-five degree to downwind approach to the airport, about thirty-six hundred feet south, a half mile south of this proposed development. From the center of it, aircraft are at an altitude of twenty-five hundred feet, basically flying overhead, about eleven hundred feet overhead. Not too bad, not too bad. Number two is the turnout of, out of traffic on crosswind right here, approximately twenty-seven hundred feet east of this development, and these people are climbing out full power, climbing from eighteen hundred feet to two, twenty-five hundred feet in here, full power. Thirdly, over here, we have aircraft coming in on a GPS approach, which is located approx- if the pilot was to fly perfectly on centerline without any errors, he would be about fifteen hundred feet north. But, but if, if the GPS is off a little bit or within criteria, or the pilot is off a little bit within criteria, he could be flying down in here on his approach to the runway. Now, he's going to be at half-power, coming right overhead at approximately five hundred feet on top of these houses. And then lastly, is departing traffic on full power, taking off to the west, coming this way across here. They make a twenty-degree left turn on departure, which places them right overhead. And they could be anywhere from, probably anywhere from a thousand to two thousand feet overhead at this time, full-power takeoff. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
How did you find out about this project?
How did I find out about this project? From Bill yesterday.
You did. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. How long you been airport manager?
A year this month.
Do you talk to the folks of the Airport Land Use Commission?
Yes, it's very, you know, I saw the date of when they submitted it to the commission, and it's very possible I was very busy with a construction project.
When did, when did you see that?
I looked at it last night online.
You didn't see it?
I haven't looked at anything with this project until last night.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, if we could have the next person step forward, please? And again, I want to remind you that we, we have a three-minute time limit, and we're turned on the beeper, so you're going to hear a beep as well as you do I.
Don't start, how do I turn this on? How do I turn it on? Okay. First, real quick, Richard, last night you said at the meeting that you went to all the surrounding homes and you saw that a three-story building wouldn't affect any view.
I didn't say that last night.
Or, not much.
No, I didn't say that either.
Something like that. Anyway, I just took a picture this morning out of my house, from my backyard, and I can show this to you. This is Emerald Greens. They're a three-story building on the, on this ridge, and I drew a line across. This is the corner of Emerald Greens. This is this tree, tree here. This is my view. Those are the foothills. And here we go, continuing that same line, same hill, same hill. Those are the Sierras, three-story building. I'm sorry, that view is going to be blocked with a three-story building. If you'd like to look at these pictures, you can.
Okay, are you going to turn those in to the commission or?
Sure, just the twenty dollars.
Okay. Also, you forgot to give us your name.
Cheryl Berg.
Your full name?
Cheryl Berg.
Okay, thank you.
And I live right here, and there's proposed three-story building. And then last night, they said there was going to be a three-story here. Now, on the old one, I guess it's not, but one of these buildings is proposed to be three-story, which is doo-doo-doo, right there. And on my way here this morning, I drove up Education Street, and looking around at all of the facilities, doctor's offices, hospital, et cetera, there are two-story buildings. And, you know, the niche is the foothill, ambiance of the foothills. You still get to see the foothills, and in those pictures, you can see, you can see some rooftops, but you can still see foothills. And, and it's a beautiful facility, and I know something's going to be built there. I'm not against, you know, I know property's going to be developed. But, and the building, the design is beautiful, but I, but it's more like, instead of the foothills, it's built more like for the Rockies. I mean, I think it was the cabin or what's the, what's the name of it?
Yosemite Lodge.
Yosemite Lodge. Yosemite Lodge has, Yosemite has big mountains everywhere. So if you build a three-story building, the three, the, you know, the gazillion-story mountains are still going to be in your view. But in Auburn, we don't have gazillion-story mountains. We have foothills. And so when you start building three-story buildings, it takes away from the ambiance of the foothills. And I know, like, the Emerald Greens is a three-story, but it is on the Bell Road corridor. It isn't back in neighborhoods. And that's a very serious concern, and, you know, it's money, 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 but, so take off one story, at least put it down so you can still see the foothills. And my other concern was the giving frontage around the border. Can I get back to that picture again, that first one? Just give me a thirty-second? Okay.
Yeah.
Just-
I'll get you there as soon as I-
There's an easement around, instead of being, oh, here, there's open space between the border, and right here, these places are right up against our fence line. And I, you know, if you just knocked off one, two, three, four, at least there's some space between the project and, and the neighborhood. That's, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, remember to give us your na, full name.
Yeah, my name is Clifford Nelson. And where's that pointer? I live right on here in Sunset Terrace, and then these buildings right here, she said, she's right, is right up against it, twenty feet to be exact from the retaining wall. And I don't want to be in my backyard where everybody's looking into my backyard. And then the other thing is that downhill on Bell Road, there's going to be a hell of a lot of traffic, trucks and everything. That's going to go on years apart. And then when they talk about relocating wetlands, that's just building a pond. It takes thousands of years to make a wetland. And I'm in favor of, you know, one story and that's it, because these apartments right here, even though they're not insistent, how many years before there are insistent living, you know, you know, taking care of people? They're supposed to be dwellings for, you know, what he says, people living on their lone, own, but they can change. So I think this whole project invests on these three-story buildings, two-story buildings to make it work. But, you know, all those people then that are going to be retiring, retiring, they don't have the money to live in this place. This is private. It's three-hundred-thousand dollars deposit to move in. Then you have to pay rent. Then you have to pay, you know, ground fees, and I don't see anybody in Auburn, you know, moving into this place. So, you know, before you consider, you know, rezoning this place, there's a lot of voters. And I would think, I would vote against homes in the next reelection, you know, if this thing comes to be a, you know, disaster. I mean, thirteen years, we don't know what's going to come in thirteen years. Economy's going to go to hell in a handbasket maybe in thirteen years, and then all this bill, all this mass grading is just going to be one dirt pile. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Simon. I was here at the last month's special meeting, and I live right in this area here. I talked to the, the architect last, last month about maybe if they're going to be putting something here, take the peak roofs off and put a flat roof on so it would, would restrict the, the view from us. This is a two-story. This is a three-story, and that's my concern. You know, I have a nice view from my backyard here. I can see everything, and I don't want my property value to go down if I want to sell it. I've been here eleven years now, and I'm also a private pilot, but I don't fly anymore, and it's just a nice area. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you could, next speaker, come queue up so that we can move time, move faster.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Walsh. I own this property here on Tahoe Street, which will back up to this development. We were aware when the, at the time that we purchased the home that development would happen back in this area, but had no idea at that time that there would be such a high density of commercial use within the core of that property. Read the EIR on the impact to the habitat, and they mentioned a few animals that could possibly habitate this area or that has a, that this area would be good for these types of animals. And observing the types of animals that are in that area, that aren't even listed, such as the ring-tailed hawk. The possibility, especially within this area, of the drainage and the wetlands area, seasonal wetland area that's through here, is a perfect habitat for the red-legged tree frog, which wasn't even mentioned in the report. And I was kind of amazed that it wasn't. I'm a retired construction engineer. I worked for the county of Nevada. We built the juvenile hall center, and it took us four years to get a sign-off from the Department of Fish and Game due to the potential habitat for the red-legged tree frog. I'm just surprised that it's not mentioned. My concern is not the development itself, except for the high-density commercial core, but we are in a flatland area right in here with the seasonal wetlands, and I have difficulty enough on this property to allow the water to leave my property. To have a buildup of taking this soil from this area and flattening this area out would dam this area in here unless there's some type of mitigation, underground mitigation that would allow that drainage into another system. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
George, do you have an aerial photograph in the car?
Yeah.
Got it. Commissioners, my name is Jeff Tupin. I live at 11185 Meadowbrook Drive, which is in the Bell Meadows community, about right here, abutting the proposal to the west. I have five points I'd like to make this afternoon. I and others have spoken and submitted written comments on this project through time over the last few years. Among other comments, the public had requested the meetings, meetings of this type, be scheduled during non-business hours to afford the public a better opportunity to attend and give feedback. Nevertheless, here we are about noon on a Thursday, and I understand that we all have day jobs and things that were being taken away from, so I'm sensitive to that, but I would suggest and highly encourage this commission to consider hosting at least one other similar hearing, because I know that I have several neighbors that wanted to make it here today but could not get time off work like myself. Point two, I have been as active as I could have been in submitting both written, written and verbal feedback on the EIR process and the scoping meeting that was afforded the public. At both of those meetings, I was advised by county staff that those meetings were only on the material nature of the EIR and the procedural requirements of SEQA, and that the public would be afforded future opportunities to comment on the merits of the project. And I understand that this meeting is one such meeting where the public is allowed to comment on the merits. I hope that we have more than one meeting in three minutes to comment on the merits of this project, and I hope again that that meeting will occur during non-business hours. Three comments on the project itself. I'm very pleased that Western Care has proposed in the EIR, the draft EIR, a clustered development alternative. I think that development or that alternative really meets some of the comments that we and others have submitted to Western Care early in the process. That alternative, at least to my satisfaction, I think some of the neighbors in Bell Meadows and adjoining neighborhoods avoids impacts to this wonderful intact blue oak woodland complex, to some of the riparian corridors that interlace that blue oak woodland, and to a number of Native American cultural grinding stone outcrops that occur also in association with that blue oak woodland. So I'm very pleased with that clustered development alternative. Point four, I've, I've brought this up before, and I know this is a bigger-picture item. I think with the existing trail network within this blue oak woodland to the west and with the current proposal for this applicant to do some mitigation and trail improvements on ARD property to the north, there's a, an excellent, I'm thirty seconds away from being done here, folks. There's a very good potential and an opportunity for the county to incorporate this trail, the ARD regional park facility, and potential trail systems here to afford neighbors in both Deer Ridge, Bell Meadows, and Tahoe Street walking in foot access to the ARD regional park facilities. I'd really encourage planning commission staff to look at that very closely and work with parks and see what sort of opportunities exist. Lastly, and very quickly, mass grading. I think we've heard that loud and clear today, particularly given the phased strategy and proposal of this project, whether it's five years or eleven to thirteen years, I'm not really clear. The EIR proposes four phases, I believe over fifteen years. Mass grading in advance of a speculative phased project is absolutely ridiculous, and to think that it is an air quality mitigation, maybe on paper and by models that's the case, but for we neighbors that, that live next to this, that would be silly to basically look over a fifteen-year period in speculative phased development and look at a, a flat piece of property that, that has no more of the character that in part influenced our ability to move here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Dale Smith, 3410 Sunshine Way in North Auburn, and I want to start my little watch so I can keep up with this. I am speaking for the North Auburn Ad hoc Committee. Three members have graciously given me their time. I have two letters there, and John Forslin can hold up his hand in the back, so you know that that's on the out, an out. Contrary to what Placer County has said about the submission of materials on this project, on this project, SEQA law permits handing in documents for the administrative record right up until the final gavel. And I want to get that on record because it isn't right to tell people that they can't put information into this. If it goes into court, it's very pertinent. Now, whether any county body responds or action is taken, they do so at their own risk. If the information we're presenting is sound and objective and relevant to the project in a meaningful way, and it obviously falls for, and calls for further investigation, the county must, in good faith, and it starts with the planning commission, do something about that. The failure to do so can be a ground for setting aside approval of the project by yourselves as the planning commission or by the supervisors. Now, no doubt, I don't have one of these fancy ways to fix this kind of stuff, but no doubt you've seen this, this wonderful picture out of the Auburn Journal, and it says, "Water Agency urges PG&E to act and canal fix as soon as possible." Well, that's, canal break is rather timely because this is about water in this area, and there's a map of that big break. Does it have a significance to this project? You better believe it has a big significance to it. Now, when I looked at the Timberline DEIR, I saw nothing of significance on the issues of fire flow, and we complained about it, and today fire flow was handled for the first time, first time I've heard anything about it. Now, the reviewer of the DIR chose to ignore the warnings recommending project approval with the proviso that, quote, "The fire flow water issue must be totally solved before the building can go flo-" the building can go forward," close quotes. That is a fatal SEQA error. It needs to be taken care of. In my letter of 4/6/2011, I cited a number of highly qualified experts and impeccable resources on the issue of fire flow water. We register all those contents as part of the testimony by reference. Now, the fire code is very specific about this and I'm turning in documents today that will show exactly what it is, so I won't take the time to read them. It is very, very important and I just trust that this will be something that you will take care of as you should. When I looked at the big set of documents that we got out there this morning, I thought, wow, wouldn't it have been wonderful to have that set of documents in my computer so I could look up this stuff without taking twenty-five minutes to look for one nauseous paragraph? Now, we don't believe that this very terse and couldn't-be-bothered attitude of the county responded on this issue in writing, where they said the proviso of the fire flow water must be totally solved before the building can go forward. That's wrong. It should be taken care of now and the assurance says that it must be there. Now, there are some loss expenses involved in this whole thing. And I tell you, I just want to have you have a little look at these. And when you think about it, it's an estimated to cost Placerville's agricultural community at least ten million dollars in losses because of this break in that. The damage to PCWA's one hundred and fifty thousand water users and their property, their livelihoods, their businesses, and the livestock will be dire. Still unknown is the costs and the impacts in dollars, but they're going to be big bucks. Now, I've never seen another project like this in the Sierra region of Placer County. I found it terribly disingenuous to find nothing of substance on the important issue of fire flow water. The reason that that water is underneath those buildings over there of Home Depot is because I fought it tooth and nail right down to the last minute and forced the county to put him and the proponent to put it in there. Otherwise, that building wouldn't be protected and it would be a fire danger. Now, Chief Johnson, you're the commissioner of my district and I'd like to ask you to consider, what if there were several fires in those two and three-story buildings simultaneously? Fire flow water's got to be there. Moving briefly to another issue which I found surprisingly covered today, but I don't think it was, where are the low-income housing units located in this project? I looked all through the FEIR, I looked through the DEIR, and I looked for low-income housing and found nothing. It's illegal according to the Placer County Housing Ordinance, in spite of what was said here today. This is also another fatal flaw that needs to be taken care of. You know, there's another one of those graphic statements that was made that I want to call attention to today because it really says what this is all about. And here's what they said. "In addition, it should be noted that the financial wherewithal of the applicant is not, and that is, and I'll emphasize, not necessary, as the applicant will be required to implement all mitigation measures." That's a very, very interesting statement. Frankly, I don't even think it makes sense. The theme was held throughout the DEIR and those forty-three pages of comments that we put in told the whole thing. The statement above says the applicant will be required to implement all mitigation measures. What if the depression deepens and lingers on for years? What if the WCCC Inc. goes bankrupt? And there's dozens of bad probabilities just like that. You and/or the supervisors must consider the potentially significant impacts that may be caused if the developer becomes financially incapable of finishing the project or financially incapable of performing the mitigation measures they agreed to in order to obtain the entitlements to the project. And by the way, that phasing is nothing more than piecemeal development, which is against the law in SEQA. And you've got to consider, and you should also adopt, some firm irreversible measures to mitigate against the loss of WCCC Inc., their promises of mitigation measures negotiated with the county by the company in order to receive the entitlements to comply with SEQA. And this should require bonding, by the way. What happens if you don't get these very important and extremely expensive loose ends tied up? The county, i.e. we, the taxpayers, you and me, assuming we all pay taxes, and I know we do, or we'd be in jail, we're the ones who are going to foot the bill. Now, look at downtown Sacramento, just a block from the Tower Bridge at a construction project that covers an entire block. There is one huge hole, six to ten feet deep, one whole block. And the site is fenced off with construction fencing all around and is very similar to the conditions in a big city slum. And it's virtually within a stone's throw of our state capitol. And the grotesque condition was caused by the developer running out of money, leaving a great big hole. And those physical conditions are causing impacts of their own and those impacts aren't being addressed. And that is exactly why the financial capability of the proponent comes into play and must be considered in Placer County and by Placer County to create a proper SEQA review. Now, the present recession is frequently described by people with significant expertise and on this issue, the various areas involved, as the worst recession since the Great Depression. And this unprecedented conditions has a direct effect on environmental conditions. You know it's true because we already have some of it right here in North Auburn. And I have a sheaf of fifteen articles to turn in today as proof of this recession. And they're titles like this, "Bailout Too Late For Some Auburn Businesses," "Area Home Prices Continue Their Long Decline," "Nurses Oppose North Auburn Birthing Center Closure," et cetera, et cetera, it goes on and on. We're in a recession. We all know that. And if the proponent goes bankrupt, it's urban blight and it's brutal. Ask my son Roland, who lives in Rockland, who's losing his house, or my sister Thelma in Lampook in danger of losing not only her house, but her office buildings too. It happens when a huge number of people and their businesses are forced from their homes and their businesses, thus creating environmental impacts that must be dealt with according to SEQA. And right now, Placer County doesn't do very well. And I just want to say to you, please, not a whole bunch of deep holes for the underground garages that they plan out there. And Timberline at Auburn is a name that's gone astray. There will be no Timberline at Auburn if this project goes through. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next. You know, when the speaker's winding up their three minutes, if the next speaker could be standing behind him so we're not waiting for people to come forward, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not his sister, but I am Thelma Lowery and I live on Red Hawk Court. Big shoes to follow. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I'm new to Auburn. We moved last year and this is an experience in civic involvement. I would ask that please do not ignore the residents' input and comments. The first I heard about this was back in November when there was a deadline of December 27th to submit something in writing to Mr. Crock, Cratch, something my one. And I did that and I wanted to just let you know that I have been involved as much as I could, being a stay-at-home mom, and I've already had to leave and come back with the children, please forgive me. But I do want to let you know that I really appreciate that, Mr. Johnson, you came last night at a time that was a little bit more feasible. And please show our children that civic involvement is useful and important because, truthfully, last night I left very hopeless and just a little bit overwhelmed because all of this process seemed like it was already opened and shut without really hearing about what the residents felt. The points that I want to make is that, first of all, I have no issue for a builder using his land. We knew when we moved here that there was open space and that there was already existing zoning and that it was going to be built at some point. But the mass grading for a development that's going to go in phases with uncertain economic times as we have now is irresponsible. We teach our children to conserve and only take what you need. We don't take extras because it's there and because you can use it. And we don't teach them to waste. And it's inconsistent to the current community. I wasn't aware at the beginning of the three-story buildings, but in finding that out, I would piggyback on that as well. And my understanding is that the development, I live in Deer Ridge, which is on the north side, and even though I'm not going to be right next door to it, I am concerned because that is my community. And we moved to an area that was, what, four, five homes per acre? We moved out of seven to eight homes per acre, where you could spit, a spit wad at the nearest neighbor. And the zoning around here, we're going into something that is so significantly dense compared to the existing. And the mass grading is just irresponsible for what our kids are being taught. And what I would hope, we have some sort of conservation and I understand that they're going to help us with, that the builder is developing a trail and that's great and I appreciate that for our future, our children are there. But with so much uncertainty to just gut it all is irresponsible and wasteful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get that aerial backup real quick, please? Is it possible? Thanks, George.
Hey, make sure you give us your name.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm Cale Muscat. I'm the district administrator with the Auburn Recreation District. And I'm just here to share that we are excited about this, working on this project with Western Care and John over there. And just so everybody knows, that's Regional Park right here and obviously the project we're talking about is here. This is the ARD property right here. At the one western edge, you can see it's kind of open. There is a existing wetlands area there that is going to be enhanced as part of this project. And then, like I said, as you heard earlier, there is going to be a trail that will be built in, a loop trail built into that property. And this walking trail will be available to everybody, to the public, wants to come use it. And there's some, you know, it's a great property to be around on. Plus, the trail will, as designed currently, it is conceptual, will loop out and take people out to view the enhanced wetlands, which will be another benefit, not only for the people walking, but also the fact that these wetlands will be enhanced will help, this is my opinion, I don't live there, but the folks that live right in this little section here will have a nice buffer zone between anything that happens with them because the wetlands will be, you know, obviously left alone. So anyways, to wrap it up, we are, we're excited about this project and we hope to get going on the trail part of it soon.
Okay, I have one question, Cale.
Yeah.
I noticed that the current zoning is zone, an ag zoning. And in the rezone, this looks like it's going to be rezoned to some kind of a residential zoning. Is that a decision on the part of the board or where did that come from?
No, that's not, that's not correct.
That's not correct?
That's not proposed to be rezoned at all. ARD property will remain exactly the same zone district that it is now.
Okay, well, I thought I saw on the zoning map that it is rezoned.
Mm-mm. It will not be.
I'll have to check it out then, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. It wasn't a decision on the part of your board?
Yes, our board, it's been, gosh, a couple of years ago at least or so, but yes, a decision on the part of the board to enter into this agreement with Western Care.
As far as the zoning of that parcel goes?
Oh, no, not as far as the zoning, no. No, no, that wasn't, that was just the agreement on the trail itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Mildred Livingston. My address is 11251 Tahoe Street. I'm a resident of Auburn for thirty-one years, this November. My property is adjacent to the development of the Timberline at Auburn. And if I could have the map back to...
I'm sorry? What?
The map back to the colored map, I'll show you where my home is. Right, I'm right about here. Right at Tahoe Street, right there. I personally am not objecting to the project at my age because I might be one of those that might need a facility like this in the next ten years. I hope not. But it appears to me that it would be wise if the Placer County Commission and others who'll be approving this project come and walk through the area in question. And I invite them all to come to my home and see for themselves what the area looks like. I don't know if this has already been done, if the commission has even walked the property. So Western Care Construction Company, Inc. is asking for at least twelve to thirteen different amendments and considerations to get the project going and to include the three-story lots as well as other concessions. This is one of the main objections that our neighbors are objecting to. And I think we all, I'm past the baby boomer age, I'm into the senior, almost senior age. So please listen to our voices. We want to have smart growth and development for ourselves and a future for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Jim Teetz. I live on Blue Fox Court. I'm representing our little community on Blue Fox Court. Our question was, I have a map here from the meeting of February 13th, 208 with ARD with the, can we have the map, the ARD connecting?
Sorry. What would you like?
That you had up with the ARD?
Yes. Wrong way. Give me a minute. There you go.
Okay, on this map, this trail that they show here in 2008, I want to know what the development of this loop trail that we could put in with a few factors and everything ourself, that is adequate for what conjunction that the project entitled. All I can see is we have a hundred-year flood zone there, wetlands that go all the way around the lots on the other side. And they're taking that for wetlands that consist behind, all the way from Silverhawk around Golden Eagle. What are we giving them all our wetlands for if they're taking that all out? Do you understand what I mean? What does that loop trail got to do with their project of retaining our wetlands that are already there? That's a hundred-year flood zone all the way around the project. The people that live off Golden Eagle can't even put a fence down there. And they got a, they got a damn street going down there. Are they going to put a wall up there where you can't build fences? Do they connect in the sewer line going down the NID easement there, the thirty-foot easement along? You know, they don't explain none of this. And for the building department to waste time, you know, putting us all through this without knowing anything, I, you know, you got the sewer line going down here that's underground behind the houses and the backyard, connecting into the sewer line there. They got, we got the flood zone on lot eighty-five that we cut down, a tree fell down, we had to cut it up and leave there. We couldn't build no fences to keep people out. They got houses, what, thirty-six duplex houses going in across that with a road all the way around? So what are they giving up for the wetlands? Can you tell me? Planning? ARD? What's the loop for?
We'll get to an answer here towards the end of the hearing.
Well, I had a one o'clock appointment, so I, that's why I cut in here. I mean, they got the canal zone here, right? You got the East Columbia Canal going right through where they're building all that stuff and it's supposed to be all open space and wetland. And they put in three-story buildings and stuff when Tony had a, Tony had a, had a school going at the church and the county took that away from him because he had the kids underneath the flight zone. That flight zone going up, the flight zone in there is going right up the middle of the ARD property, one hundred and fifty feet off of Blue Fox Court. And they're putting all these, all the children at school and everything, saying they can't do the schools or anything else and they got all these people going in there. I think, I think the community there needs a senior citizen complex, right? But why can't you do it like Del Webb and everything without all the three-story buildings and all the duplexes backing up, thirty-six duplexes backing up in a wet zone? So I don't attend these meetings much and I'm sorry I can't because it goes way back to the seventies and everything, okay? I'm not a good speaker to start with. Thank you.
Well, that's okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi-ho. My name is Scott Holbrook. I'm elected...
I'm a elected representative to the Auburn Recreation District, but I am speaking on my own here. Uh, first off, I think this is the kind of project that not only should be supported, but facilitated, and, and in a time like this, actually expedited, in my opinion. Uh, there's a reason that the North Auburn MAC, which is all our representatives unanimously approve this project. It's a great project. Uh, we're not talking about dumping a strip mall in the middle of Yosemite here. This is a mixed-use area. People talk about everything, but no one's brought up the greens. We want to avoid the greens. I don't know how this thing works.
Red button.
Huh? Right here, we got thousands of people that live there. I don't know how many of those call the airport every day complaining about noise. Right here, we have schools. Uh, we have a church with a ton of people here. Uh, right here, on June seventeenth, there is a free party in the park for the whole community. I don't hear people up there fighting, let's close the schools, it's not safe, you know, let's close down here, it's too much noise. Everyone that lives in this area, I lived right there next door to Dale for, since nineteen eighty-eight, I knew at that time this was going to be a retirement community. It, it, it should be, I was excited, I looked forward to that. People say they can't afford it, I guarantee everybody in this neighborhood will be able to afford to live in that community at some point. This is not a, a, a low-income community, it's a middle community. We have some higher ends, some lower end. I invite everyone to please go visit one of these types of facilities. They're beautiful, they offer an opportunity to a segment of our population to spend the last days of their lives in comfort and near their friends and family. We have hospitals here, we have all that, it's perfect. You know, and no one's going to want in their backyard something, but this is great. I'd much rather have that than, you know, more commercial, more hospitals. As far as the loop trail goes, I think that demonstrates, you know, what kind of company Western Care is. They easily could go buy wetlands out in Lincoln, you know, I mean, go buy the Army Corps, here's a couple million dollars, we'll buy the wetlands, and they have no requirement to save those here. They came to ARD and said, hey, look at, what can we do to help make this a win-win for all? We'd like to do this, instead of going and buying wetlands in Lincoln, how about we work with you? You can preserve some of that for eternity, and in exchange, we'll build a trail. It'll be a trail that'll help all the people not only to live here, but you could walk out this door and connect to a trail at Regional Park. Uh, it's just, just such a wonderful project, I really hope you give it to Don, and thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Hello, gentlemen, I'm Patty Robinson, and I live at 11190 Meadowbrook Drive. I think the one thing that hasn't been addressed here is, uh, the traffic. Um, by my count, there's going to be over a thousand units in this development, and if each unit has two cars, as most of us do, that's two thousand more cars on Bell Road and on forty-nine. And I would like to know what your plan is for traffic. How are you going to handle that? I will be driving on Bell Road past this development quite often, every day, and I just would like to know what you're going to do. Um, I'm also very concerned about the beautiful, beautiful forest that we have at the end of our street. We walk there with our dogs and with our, our children, and we, we move there for that forest. I've lived there twelve years, I've lived at Auburn twenty-seven years, and I moved here for the trees and the foothills. So I would like for you to preserve what we already have, and I know it is in your power to do that. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else rushing to the microphone. So I'm perceiving that we're done with the public, uh, phase of this program. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And I guess this time, before I bring it back to the commissioners, I'll give the, uh, project manager a chance, if you'd like to address some of the comments that have come up.
Thank you, I'll, I'll, I'll address a couple, the...
Say, John?
Yes.
You know, I'm getting, uh, my arm twisted here to take a short break. Would that give you a chance to, uh, take a break too? Yeah, okay. We'll take about five minutes here. Thank you.
Okay, we'll talk to you later.
Mr. Johnson?
I gotta go behind.
Okay, folks, if I could have you get back together again.
Oh, yeah. Wouldn't we all love that?
Okay, you're on again.
Okay. Okay, thank you. John Margowski again. Want to thank our neighbors for all of their concerns and questions. I'd have a lot of the same concerns. The four-volume draft EIR and final EIR addresses most of those concerns. There was a couple of issues that I just wanted to clean up and then I was going to have the architect talk on some of the visual and engineering issues. On this one, Rich, you were talking about the ARD property and so you can see this is currently farm and then it's proposed farm. But I think when you get to the other one, which is the general plan amendment, that's the one that says residential five units.
This one says low-density residential.
Yeah, see, so, okay.
So I was just wondering why it's low-density, you know, low-density residential. That's because it goes with the farm zone. I determined that.
Okay.
But, you know, you could ask the question, since we're changing all the zoning, why aren't we changing it to open space? But that would be in...
Can I ask a quick question? Is that map, is it in some of our literature here?
Yes.
Is it? I just wanted to...
I believe you've got black and white copies.
Yeah, it's attachment F in your packet.
In the packet that we got, okay.
And it's also in the EIR.
Oh, I couldn't find it either one. How about that?
And the second issue, there was on the ARD property, as far as the wetlands, there was a question here at the end. And again, we've got a couple of acres on the property in the center of the site that we're going to fill. Okay, here we go. In the center of the site, two acres of wetlands that we're going to fill. And we're going to recreate two acres of new wetlands on the property, on the ARD property, in exchange for us locking up part of their property in perpetuity that we've agreed with ARD to build the loop trail around the property approximately forty-five hundred linear feet. So with that, I'm going to have Bruce just touch on it.
Let me just...
Okay.
Okay, what I heard the gentleman talking about is there's a kind of, there's an ephemeral stream course, or maybe it's a live stream course that runs adjacent to Deer Ridge.
Yes, there's...
And actually, they've established an open space parcel there, I believe it looks like, because it kind of goes into the Deer Ridge property a little bit. And so I think he was referring to that as his wetland, so...
Okay. That, which is up here on the north, just like the little creek kind of runs in between the properties, you know, at some point it's on theirs and sometime point it's on ours and then it kind of exits out the back corner here. We're going to retain all of that, so we're not going to fill that part. But there is a section here where we're going to enhance the drainage to that creek. Anything below that, which feeds part of it now, would be replumbed as part of the onsite irrigation project. And the county has all the requirements that, you know, we control the drainage and our flows are the same post as pre and so we'll take care of that. But again, the drainage up here and the drainage here will be retained, but there's a little section here that will be enhanced drainage and then the wetlands that will fill in the center of the site. So the drainage up on top really doesn't have anything to do with my mitigating for the wetlands on the ARD property, if that makes any sense.
He was talking a little bit about a fence there, too. You're going to fence it where he was saying you can't?
Yeah, we're proposing to fence, you know, the site, solid fencing. If the neighbor has open fencing and they want to retain that, we're fine with that. But the current proposal is solid fencing around the residential and then the commercial or by the lake, we'd have open wrought iron type fencing.
He was implying that the Deer Ridge folks couldn't fence theirs?
I don't know their requirements.
Okay.
John, before you sit down, I have kind of an engineering question. Is that you or is that your architect?
I'll probably quickly let him handle it, but go ahead with the question.
Well, there were two things that were raised. Dan Walsh, who lives just at the south of the property there, raised a question about the drainage off his property. And I was just curious if you're going to impact that, improve it, or what? And the other one was several people made the point that mass grading is irresponsible. I'm not an engineer. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Is mass grading irresponsible?
I was going to have the architect handle the grading issue. As far as the drainage, there's a whole drainage plan and I like to say I have the civil here, but he's not the civil. He can probably address it, but just to say probably the drainage will be better.
Okay, so it was considered?
Yes.
The water moving on those adjacent lots?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Got to be faster.
George, if you could put the site plan up. I'm Bruce McPherson. I'm the architect. I want to address the grading and then also a little bit about the design, the mass design of the site itself. They're kind of related and they come back and maybe answer some of the questions you're having relative to that. With regards to the grading, the way the project is considered to be developed, it starts down with the parcel in this corner as phase one. Then moves up to this area as the second part of phase one, if you will. In order to develop this area here, the infrastructure of the road has to be installed and the infrastructure of the undergrounds for the sewer and the water lines need to be installed. This pond here or lake needs to be dug out. The areas underneath here need to be dug out. What happens is that that dirt, as the civil engineer designed the site, gets relocated on site. He's balanced cut and fill on the sites. We're not having to import or export a lot of dirt. And so if we were to just do this piece to start with, that dirt that we pull out would have to be stockpiled somewhere else on the site. The location would be in the area over here. Now, part of what happens in this area of the site is that it's, as been mentioned, is fairly flat, gently sloping down. When it gets graded, what will happen is it'll get, it'll get, the highs will get knocked down and the lows will get filled in. And there's a deeper cut in here that will get filled in eventually with the dirt that's being pulled out of here. So in order for the, actually for the site and the health of the site and the logistics of doing the grading, if we don't, when we take the dirt out of here, if we don't put it where it's going to go, we're going to have to store it on site and usually stockpile it. And you've seen those, there's little mounds that go up and down and those are, I think visually more objectionable than creating a, kind of that gentle hillside that would be there after we've done the rough grading on that. Then, of course, until that area gets developed, that would be reseeded and vegetated until the area is developed, so it wouldn't be just a bare piece of dirt on the ground. And this area here, in terms of its grading, the next part of phase one starts down in this area here. This area terraces, there's kind of a level area here and then this drops down, I believe it's about nine feet. And then that area there drops down about thirteen feet, if I remember the numbers correctly. They're in those ranges. Another aspect is relative to these terraces here or these duplexes here, they also terrace down, each one of these little clusters terrace down. The neighbors here, their property at the property line is about nine feet above where our proposed grade level would be adjacent to it. So these single-story duplexes would be actually dropped down. Along with that, the overall site development, why we laid it out the way we did, we have, of course, the overflight zone here where the residential can't be on that side of it. In order to achieve the variety of housing units that the potential residents of the community will want to have, we looked at doing a variety of, you know, the villas, duplexes, single-family villas, the apartments, the independent living apartments and then, you know, the common areas, two and three story. And what we wanted to do is move the three-story as far away from the existing single-family residential as we could. And part of that is to be able to maintain the views of the distant Sierras. And so what happened is our three, our line of three-story buildings roughly comes down like this. Now, these are also three-story, those two as well. The two-story buildings here, and then down like this, are a little closer into the existing residence. And with the grading as it steps down and the buildings as they step down closer, that helps to maintain the views of the Sierras in the distance. We've done some, or some view studies have been done specifically from this area and this area and over here to see how our heights of the buildings would impact those views. And we developed it that way to try to, and in fact minimize the views as much as possible. And I will say, too, this area here also has the three-story developments. That's the professional and medical office buildings and the commercial on the corner. In general, the site is high at this end and slopes down this way. And then there's kind of a little knoll up here with a, kind of a valley that runs through here. And that more or less will be maintained when the final development's done with, you know, the grading logic that I explained.
Most of the parcel drains to west, does it? Do you have it?
I'm not sure I understood the question.
Let me see. At least my impression is that the majority of this parcel, if you look at the drainage, even from the far corner down by Bell Road, drains to, towards Jover Road or towards the west?
The natural drainage runs this way and the, that drainage pattern would be maintained with some, you know, with some adjustments, of course.
And so really only a small portion of the parcel drains towards Highway forty-nine?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. If there's any other questions I could answer?
I have a question. On the mass grading, how will that affect the trees that are going to, well, how does it affect the trees?
Well, the site, the development anticipates maintaining a certain number of the significant oak trees that are there. And then also maintaining the oak trees in this area and down through here and around like this. Now, throughout the site where you see these green areas, those are existing oak tree clusters that we're contemplating, well, not contemplating, that we're maintaining. And then there's individual oaks, for instance, here as an example, down in this area over here that are significant oak trees, those aren't the only ones, but those are examples, that will be maintained. So the drainage and the grading has been designed in order to maintain those oak trees intact and not impact them in a way that they would be detrimentally harmed or, you know, so that they would die off. And that, there's a number of things that we have to do in order to achieve maintaining those oaks with regards to, you know, what the grade levels can be relative to the new grade levels. Certainly, they're not going down. And then as well as maintaining the clear spaces around the drip line of the oak trees and that sort of thing. So we've taken that into consideration as we've developed out the site plan of the oak trees that are being saved. And there was an oak tree study done very early on that identified the significant oaks that were, should be maintained versus some that needed further study versus some that should be removed.
On the west part of the plan there, the lower density part, how many, approximately how many of those oak trees will be there after grading and before construction?
The...
How much of the canopy is going to be left?
Sure. No, I appreciate your question. I can't give you a specific...
No, no, just approximate.
But I'll try to answer your question. The area of green here is what would be maintained of the existing oak trees. This area in here currently has oak trees as well, so you would see that area would be impacted where this area would be maintained.
I guess one question I kind of have about that western edge is, is there seems to be quite a bit of pretty strong feelings about the mass grading. And probably the word mass grading just causes a lot of real negative feelings in sheriffs' minds. And it looks like the majority of the grading and balancing cuts and fills is going to occur in the center part of the project. What I'm wondering is that western edge, you know, you may be going to have to do a lot of balancing fills there, too. But if not, it seems like that may be a possible area where if you're not going to develop that right away, it would be two or, you know, a few years from now. That it may, in the big picture, probably wouldn't, it might cost a little bit more, but at any rate, in terms of the public, if those trees are there, and I don't know if that would even be desirable, to tell you the truth, because as long as they're there, they're going to fight cutting them down. But at any rate, it might appease some of the concerns. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Some thoughts?
Yeah. Let me read to you a part of condition six. It says, "The applicant shall revegetate all disturbed areas. Revegetation undertaken from April first to October first shall include regular watering to ensure adequate growth." The winterization plans shall provide with project, with the improvement plan. So I think I was concerned, I was concerned about the, you know, the grading and then have it turn to dust and have the neighbors complaining. But if they're going to revegetate and maintain adequate irrigation, it's going to turn into just a big green park, hopefully.
Or grassland, oops, grassland maybe or something.
It'll turn into a vegetated area and, you know, I'm not, I don't know the specific varieties of plantings that will be there, but that condition is there and that, you know, we're actually very much in favor of that because it does keep the dust down for everybody for that to occur as well as making a more appealing visual environment after that area's been graded.
But it won't replace the oak trees that'll be taken out in that area to the left if it's not needed to, like our chairman was talking about earlier, then they're still taken out. I still think it's, it'd be, it looks like it's minor part of the grading. If you're not going to develop that area until last, which I think was a part of the plan, why do you have to take out any oak trees in that area?
Well, as you pointed out, when that area is developed, the oak trees will come out. And part of what we look at in terms of the grading sequence and impacting the neighborhood overall in terms of that, the rough grading is the main grading event where the majority of the dust and the noise and the heavy equipment that's used comes out at that time. If we spread that out over time, then there's a greater impact that occurs to the neighbors, to our development, and quite frankly, to the natural environment. If we do it all at once, it helps, I think, I believe, everything. And, you know, again, if we were just taking out the trees and doing nothing about that, that would be one thing. But we are going to be putting planting back in its place and the trees will come out eventually.
Okay. Any other questions, I guess, in regards to... I guess I'm a little bit confused because we heard a different view of the phasing from the county than I guess we're seeing in the EIR.
The, John, I don't know if you want to address the phasing. The phasing that we had proposed as the EIR is what we were anticipating following. What George said earlier about the various parcels, I believe, is a true statement as far as it goes, but I believe, and John, I don't know if you want to answer this. But I believe how we submitted it under the EIR with the phasing that's proposed is what we're planning on following. And that has to do a lot with how the number of units that we're able to develop and the cost of developing those units and the infrastructure that goes with it. A lot of the primary infrastructure has to be developed before, you know, if we were to develop one unit, we'd have to put in the road and a lot of the infrastructure. So we need to develop enough to offset those costs early on. So there's incentive, or not just incentive, there's a need for us to develop it kind of the way that we proposed. John, do you want to add?
Yeah, the details in the EIR, the four phasing plans, it's kind of a bigger picture that we still intend to move forward on that. But in conversations with engineering and such, the question came up, well, what about if we wanted to build this one that's out of phase instead of something else? And then that slowly evolved into a complete detailed infrastructure analysis plan of if you built outside of the phase, what you would need to do. But the four phases in the EIR still is the overall best guess conceptual idea of how we would build it. But as market demands occur, there might be, you know, some big medical company who comes in and says, hey, I want to build all five of those medical office buildings, which then we want to have the flexibility reacting to the market so that infrastructure analysis showed that. And it's still consistent with the EIR, so, sorry for the confusion.
Okay, that's right.
One thing on the water for, I know in fire flows and stuff, there were some comments on that. Maybe just explain how you can't even move ahead with anything until you have the will serve and then also maybe just go back over how your concepts for making the fire check.
Sure. On the current fire flow, we've met with Brad, who's in the back audience there a number of times about, there were some, what we thought in the beginning was a solid number of fire flows, like twenty-five hundred gallons per minute. But as it turns out in the building code for certain commercial-sized buildings, if you build it to a certain standard, those are the fire flows that apply. And so as we went through the project, some of the larger commercial buildings have the higher fire flow needs. And so George said it one way that we don't currently have the fire flows to build the project. But yet if we built the project with certain fire enhancements, I'll say, in those three-story buildings, that we do have the fire flows. But to give us complete flexibilities, we want and desire, and the fire department desires, not only for our project, but for the Greens and the way to have more fire flow. So we're together working with NID and then hopefully this summer, they're going to make a connection in forty-nine, which will enhance the fire flows where then we'll have all the flexibility in our buildings as far as we will not have to put in all the fire enhancements that are required for lower flows. And the, along with the different connections that we'll be making, we're making four or five different connections to the neighborhoods here. And with that, the fire system or the water system becomes looped and then the pressure's stabilized. So if there is a fire in one area and the quantity of water draws down, in this case, this project will enhance the local firefighting abilities just because the different pipe segments are looped.
Okay, maybe just, anybody else have questions? Okay, maybe I'm the only one here. Richardson Drive?
Yes.
Now, is the project going to construct Richardson Drive through so it becomes, I guess, a major collector road or whatever through the...
Ultimately, ultimately it will, but it won't be built until three, until phase three.
Okay.
So that will probably be, you know, halfway of the entire site would be built out before the last segment of Richardson would go through.
Okay. And then I think what we discussed earlier, you were talking something about that you would need, there was a discussion of the sewer line down Richardson?
Yes.
And so that'll become your assignment, too, or...
Yes, part of the mitigations of the problem or the project is that currently the off-site, the trunk line that goes between Bell and the plant up on Jover is currently undersized and it surcharges in certain locations. It runs through residential backyards in certain locations and so it's, when it rains, they have a problem with infiltration and the sewage comes up to the manholes. It doesn't escape, but the pipe is clearly undersized. So in order for our project to come online, there's certain segments that would need enhancement, but in the EIR, we studied the entire thing. And we're working with the facility service to come up with some cost sharing if we replace parts that our project doesn't need. But overall, for the community, it's better if we get reimbursed, I guess, fairly. We don't care. We're ambivalent on that point.
Okay. And then, as I understand, too, since the majority of the project flows to the west, you'll be upgrading the sewer lines that serve virtually Deer Ridge and probably all the way almost out in segments to the Jover Road Sewer Plant?
There's a couple that's actually not Deer Ridge per se, but over here, there's a connection that the facility services is asking us to make to these. I think there's six homes there that we need to connect to. And then there's this assisted living facility here that we're going to connect to. And I, I'm not the sewer expert, but I, the overall goal of facility services is the gravity feed. And I think currently those two pump. And so they could then gravity feed into the new trunk line and the trunk line would go up to Jover. Now, Deer Ridge...
That's a truck line that's not the one you just talked about, right?
Yes, it's the same one.
It's the same one?
Same one.
And Richardson Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're going to be realigning it a little bit, but it basically goes down Richardson. It comes out, comes out the top of the site like that. And we're going to move it around so it, the access for the facility services is actually, you know, better because there will be a paved road next to it and you'll have manholes next to the paved road so they can access it with their pump trucks and things.
And so the majority of the site before you build Richardson Road, where does the sewage go to from? I mean, how are you getting that to Jover Road?
Well, almost, almost with the first few buildings, we'll need to upgrade the sewer trunk line. But if there's a number of buildings that we can do prior to upgrading the sewer trunk line, then we would plumb temporarily, like we would like to plumb probably the model homes down here to the existing trunk line, which is close to Richardson. Or the retail building, maybe a Pete's Coffee type situation into the trunk line. Maybe facility services would say there might be enough capacity in that trunk line for that, the existing trunk line. But soon after that, when we build phase one or the heart of phase one here, we would need to upgrade a large section between Bell and the plant.
And so is that the one that's going down Richardson Road? So everything's going down Richardson Road or...
Well, the sewer pipeline, part of it goes down Richardson and then curves over.
Okay.
Oh, I said it was going down Richardson, but I probably was a little confusing that it doesn't go all the way straight out Richardson and goes up to the plant. We looked at that and I can't remember why that wasn't a good idea, but currently it comes out here and comes up, comes up through the Deer Creek Park and then down some roads and then into the people's backyards and then to the plant.
Okay. Okay, I think I got the picture now. I was just trying to analyze it with the, what I was seeing in the EIS. Let me see. Now, as I understand it, you, it's going to be a gated community and it's, for security purposes, you'll have a fence all the way around it, which I guess you'll match up with the neighbors as much as you can.
Yes, whatever the preferences. The exception being... The exception being that there will be a trail that comes from Golden Eagle and connects to the ARD property, and then of, of course, none of the commercial will be fenced. That will be, there, there will be a 10-foot trail that runs between Bell and the regional park, and of course, that won't be part of the fencing area. The restricted access would, would more or less be along the, this route here.
Okay, and so you have two entries into the restricted part, as I see it, so.
Yes, yes. And, and three if you include the emergency access, but that's just for, for fire trucks.
Yeah, for fire trucks?
For fire trucks.
Yeah, well, let me, let me just say that the two that you got, I think, are, are good, because if you have a subdivision with just one, then you have 800 people behind the lock gate potentially if you have a problem on that one. The one that goes into the Deer Ridge, what's the design on that gate? That's confusing. I, I did look at a gate between Deer Ridge and what they call Foothill Oak, and that gate is about the only people that would keep out are the good guys, because all you have to do is go lift up the bars and you can open it up and drive through it. What's going to be the design on this gate, and I guess what's the fire department asking for?
Well, since Brad is in the back, I think, maybe Brad can address it, but currently we're going to build what the fire department requires, which they can get through both sides, and in an emergency, the people can get in and out, but.
Oh, he's just Brad, you?
Want to add anything more than what I said, or? No, that's, he, he-
Emergency clearance for both us and people above Deer Ridge.
I can't hear you. Could you come forward?
Brad Albertazzi with Cal Fire, Plush County Fire. What he's talking about is that gate, it can be gated just like the one you saw with unlocked, is which we prefer, because we don't want residents to have to do anything special to get out. So that gate in particular can also have a, we're, we're allowing pressure pads on either side, so it's an escape route for Deer Ridge to come through in case they're blocked in, and it's also an escape route for these people to get out the opposite way.
So they just drive up on the pressure pad, so now they don't even have to get out and open it up if-
Yeah, we'll allow that.
They're sneaking in if they're not one of the good guys.
Right. We, we prefer the pinned ones like you. That was kind of our design.
Okay. Yeah, they're, they're nice, but sometimes it makes you wonder why we have a gate there, because particularly like Deer Ridge, you know, but that serves Deer Ridge, you know, they need, they really need two ways, you know? If you're going to have some kind of an incident going down at the main road entry, then everybody's going to have to have a way to escape. That way it works, but, you know, for the neighborhood, it probably, they didn't need it really, because, you know, the good guys are blocked and the bad guys just go-
Right, and we run against that constantly, you know, the, the, they don't like, they want, the neighborhood wants them locked, but we want them unlocked for their own good.
Okay. So this one, if they want a secure neighborhood, people don't have to wreck their car to get out, they can use a bump pad if they know how to do it?
A bump pad?
You said some kind of a-
No, it's a pressure pad that, that will, the car will roll up onto and then automatically open.
Oh, it's on the street?
Yeah, on the street.
They'll have to get out of their car.
Kind of like what switches your traffic lights.
Cool, cool.
But only good guys.
And then, then they'll have to find their way to the front gate, I guess, and figure out how to get through that.
Right.
Yeah, okay. That answers that question.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, you know, there's just, let me just bring up the question so you answer it, because there's a lot of people that talked about the three-story buildings. That seems to be a major issue, three versus two.
Yes.
And, you know, I know there's some decisions you had to make there, but why, why are we doing that?
Bruce, can you talk about the senior advantage to having three stories and close to the Commons Building here?
Could you finish your question? I'm sorry.
Well, a lot of people are having concerns with the visual appearance of a three-story building in their residential neighborhood. And so, you know, I'm hearing from you that it's imperative that you put in three-story buildings and not two-story buildings, so, just the rationale?
Sure. There, there's, there's a couple of reasons, and one has to do with the overall density of the site and where we're allowed to build and not build, and that kind of drove some of the, the heights of the buildings, and I talked about that a little bit. Another issue though, that, that I didn't address, which is very germane to this, is that this building here, Building A, is, is what is called the Commons Building, and that's going to be kind of the, the center of the community, of, of the entire development. In that building is going to be a, a, a lot of the common functions that the residents will take advantage of, dining areas, you know, coffee shops, ice cream parlors, things like that, that just, the areas where people will congregate and meet. In order for the folks who, who live in these buildings here, and, and the folks who will live in these buildings are ones whose mobility may be less advanced, I guess is a good way to put it, they need to be closer in to that common area where they're going to. So what we've done is that we've connected the buildings so that, with, with covered passageways, so that they can, on their floor, go to a, a vertical circulation route and elevator that allows them to get down to that, that common area with as few steps as possible. And that's rather common in, in a senior development like this, is to try to minimize that distance, that some of the seniors are going to have to travel to get to that area, especially the ones who live in those buildings who will be less, less mobile potentially. And that's what drives the three-story, and you've seen perhaps other developments, not here, of course, where they'll go four, five, and six stories, and it's very much for the same reason, is to bring the outlying areas in. So that, that really is a very strong motivating factor for putting the three-story buildings in.
Okay.
You used an architect term.
Excuse me?
Vertical circulation.
Vertical circulation and elevator.
Is that what I would call an elevator?
Yes, what, yes.
Okay.
I got a question. Why don't you make it all a two-story and then cal eliminate the elevator?
Well, uh, well, go ahead and try and answer that if you want, but we, we've closed a public hearing now.
We would be required to have an elevator regardless of if it's two or three or whatever. If it's one story, we wouldn't have an elevator. Unless, and, and this site, this site due to its nature, terraces down, to accommodate those terraces, even if it was one story, we may end up with elevator. So, you know, it's, that elevator is there to, to facilitate the mobility and the accessibility of our residents.
Let me see, let me, let me just, you're not off the hook yet, but you're doing a good jo, you're doing a good job.
I just-
Just, you know, we just need to get this out in the record and for the commission to consider these issues when we're making our consideration. We, we did hear concerns about the density.
Yes.
And when I look at this, where we did have a significant acreage on the site in the medium density residential, we've eliminated that and increased markedly the, I don't even know if I'm looking at the right table, but we've increased the high density and commercial. And this table I'm looking at, all of a sudden, doesn't add up to me, but that's okay. The commercial and the high density, 15 per acres is where the majority of the density is now versus the medium density.
That's correct.
And just an explanation of that.
John, do you want to address any of this? I can.
Well, the, the need for it is straightforward, is that some of the zoning is within the overflight zone, which then the, you've got a conflict between the two plans, the airport plan and the general plan and the zoning plan, so they would be in conflict. So we needed to adjust the zoning in specific areas, mainly in the center of the site. The current zoning would allow for the same number of units that the, that we're being, that we're proposing, including the senior density bonus program. So that really didn't, wasn't a big driver was to increase the density, that the big driver was to make the site consistent with the zoning, and so the zoning that we're proposing, which is commercial and, and such, is that commercial allows 15 units per acre, as does the high density residential, but the commercial in some points is, is consistent with the overall vision of the site, which, as George mentioned earlier, that in the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, there's a large section that discusses the vision for this specific property and, and the vision that we followed four years ago when we started designing it, and after our community meetings, was one that's very consistent with the Auburn Community Plan. And, and again, we didn't really ask for the zoning change to increase density. We could have done that before, but it wouldn't, wouldn't have been nearly as nice of a product. You would have ended up having, you know, potentially, not that we would ultimately come before you and ask for it, but potentially you could have large buildings in high density close to property lines, and we chose to attempt to put the three-story buildings in the middle of the site, furthest away from the residences, existing residences, and have the nicest, nicest quality product that, that we could.
Okay. Basically, you're maintaining the same amount of units that you would have if-
Yes.
If other-
So, can I ask, can I just clarify that now? So the zoning, basically combining, you know, commercial and residential, but overall, then the density is the same?
Yeah, overall, if you combined all the different densities on the site and included the senior density bonus program, which the county has this density bonus program, if you achieve certain milestones for a senior project, that today could be much more than the 858 units with the existing zoning.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let me see, on the trail access, you're providing trail access to the Deer Ridge folks, and some of them are concerned that people are going to park and use the trail there, but more than likely, they're going to go down to the park and use the trailhead down there. But the other folks on the west side of the, are, don't, there's a tra, existing trail that comes into the site on the west side of the property, was it Middlebrook Road or whatever?
Yes.
And so that one is not going to be there? I mean, you're not going to allow access through that?
Currently, the, the, the site is signed all over, no trespassing and things, but, you know, I mean, the company, people use it to, you know, teach their kids how to ride bikes and everything, and, and that's fine until we have issues out there. But the project as designed will, for mainly for security reasons, that we analyzed it when the, the issue was brought up three or four years ago, as far as how do we get some people access specifically these areas to the site? And we thought about maybe, you know, a small area there, and it just, it just wasn't working out, where you have a small little alleyway where you're allowing public, you know, so you'll have public coming all the way across using that, and then we conjured up images of kids messing around in that corridor, and then do you have your security guard monitor that site? It, it just, it wasn't a good situation, and so we are providing for access for, like you indicated, from Golden, Golden Eagle Drive. So we're increasing the conductivity of the trails tremendously, but we're not, we're not perfect. So yes, the people on the west don't have, won't have access, but yet we'll provide more access for Golden Eagle, the people all the way around the ARD trail, the 10-foot wide trail will connect basically with the DeWitt and the regional park.
And we have a, we have a trailhead at that location?
At the regional park, yes. There will be, I can't remember the number of parking spots that we're putting in, but something like 25.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm, I'm worn out. How about yourself? Anybody else?
Yes.
You wore me out too.
Did I?
How are you?
Okay, wake up there. Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission. And so where do we go from here, folks?
I just have a question for the chair. Some people had brought up this issue about an evening meeting, additional meeting. Anybody have any feelings, or has there been enough meetings over the last three years? I've only been on the commission for, since the first of the year, so I'm not familiar with what other meetings may or may not have occurred, or?
Well, there were some people that brought that up, that they, in fact, several people had to leave today because-
Right, I'm just, just trying to see what, come to some kind of closure at least.
Yeah, and so I guess it's up to the, you know, I guess ultimately, I'll have to do this with that if we're going to continue it, but I would like to hear from the commission on that point, you know? Some of the comments that I've heard so far are that, you know, is there something that is going to come up that we haven't heard or dealt with, or able to deal with today, new? And that would be a reason for an evening meeting, clearly, but, or if there's some question that's outstanding that, that really hasn't been addressed sufficiently would be another reason.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm sort of open to the commission.
In my 15 years on this commission, which is somewhat junior compared to Larry, I can remember two night meetings. One was Bickford Ranch, which was a huge project down in the Lincoln area. The other was Bayside Church on Sierra College and Douglas. Otherwise, typically, these things are flushed out through the MAC, through comments to the EIR, through appearances and letters and emails and all the stuff that comes flooding in and gets responded to in the EIR. So I certainly would be willing to do a, a night meeting if I thought there was something new, novel, or not yet presented to the commission that would be presented. I'm sitting here thinking, what else could there be?
One, one thing that we still have an opportunity to address, and as you remember, is we haven't talked about the variances yet, but we can do that set now, probably. Anybody else?
No, I also think that if, if there's still some dissatisfaction that they haven't had enough public hearing, that it could easily be appealed to the board and very likely will be.
Well, we're not only approving the project, the- Change in the zoning, I want that, has to go to the board.
Yeah.
So all of this is moot if they don't approve the zoning changes.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
They could, they could bring it all up anyway, so.
But there's more bites at the apple you have to come.
Yeah, yeah.
An apple time for written comments to come in for those who can't.
Just, just as a point of order here, just so the commission is, is aware, that what the board will be considering is the amendments to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, the land use rezonings, and the zoning text amendment. You're the final approving authority on the conditional use permit, the minor use permit, the variances, the exception to the noise ordinance, and the subdivision map. So if somebody wished to take those up at the board, they will need to file an appeal of your decision on those latter five items. Is that, is that clear?
The other three that you mentioned, they go straight to the board.
The three, the, the land use amendments go straight to the board, the board must take an action on that to approve the whole project.
Right.
But when it goes to the board, unless somebody appeals the subdivision of the variances, those won't be before the board's decision. They will be approved and just go into effect when the board approves the zoning and general plan.
Right, right, but if somebody appealed that, or the board said, nope, we're not rezoning, we're not changing anything from what it is today, then all of it goes away anyway?
Correct. If the board doesn't approve the general plan or land use rezonings, the project then would not be able to move forward.
Would our action today constitute final action on the EIR?
No, the board will have to certify the EIR as well, but you need to certify the EIR today as well for your actions. So the EIR still needs to go to the board for final action on the other three items.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you want to discuss the variances, there's a list of them on page 10 of our, our staff report, would it be your preference to take them on one by one?
I, I think we probably should do that. Some of the areas are ones that we normally on smaller days routinely have discussions about.
Here's the variance to-
Do you want to? What page is that?
This page 10.
10, on that.
Variance for increased fence height.
First one's fence height.
Well, there's more, there's more sections to the variances on page 24, if you're interested in that.
Well, just start on 10.
Where you are, Larry, I think is in the findings.
Yeah, there's the findings, you're right.
Yeah.
Sophie.
Okay, well, let's just go ahead and take them.
They want to do six to eight feet around the RV and both storage yards.
Which, I think-
Yeah, somehow makes sense.
No, makes sense to me, I think, yeah.
Backing into, into public or private roadways?
Yeah, that, typically, we require parallel parking, and I think this was allowed because it was back on some private streets and- it was back on some private streets, and when I, when I read it, it, it made sense in that instance.
Yeah, okay. Entryway variances on setbacks? And this is just dealing with features, I guess, entryway features? And signage?
Well, there's one you skipped about parking variances.
Oh, okay, parking variances.
Variances look okay, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with the variances.
You don't?
No, they're minor.
Signage variance?
Yeah.
They're not significant after-
After what we went through on the multi-tenant signs on Douglas or Corey Hans, this is nothing.
Okay, folks, well, what do we do now? Did we cover everything?
Well, if that's the case, and everybody's looking at me, then why don't I make a motion and see what applies? I'm going to make a motion based on the recommendation of the staff that we approve the Timberline Project subject to the findings in our staff report, as it is in keeping with the orderly development of the North Auburn community and is consistent with the development vision set forth in the Auburn Community Plan. Let's see, how many findings have we got? They go quite a ways. And subject-
To the erratic.
And subject to the recommended conditions of approval as modified by an errata dated five-eleven, two thousand and eleven.
And just as a point of order, it includes the certification of the final EIR consistent with the implement which I passed out to your commission prior to the hearing that substitutes for finding number one in the staff report.
Okay, yes, I do have that, and we'll incorporate that as part of my motion. Does that, before you second it, does that cover everything that we needed to touch?
Just so the record is clear, what I hear the motion to be is to adopt the staff recommendation as set forth in the staff report as to all of the items, the three to go to the board, and the five, which were the final decision of the board here today.
And that also includes the modifications that were subsequently given to us that weren't in the staff report as originally presented.
Correct, with the errata sheet to the, to the conditions.
Right, yours and the staff or the planning department. Okay, that's it.
Now, I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
If that includes a tentative subdivision map, then two doesn't.
That's correct. Correct.
Okay, I'm not hearing much, so we'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks. Oh, one more thing, folks, as was mentioned, there's an opportunity to file appeal, and you'll want to do it. In ten calendar days, the fee is five hundred and four dollars, and the appeal that you would want to look at is the, the certification of the final EIR, the conditional use permits, the minor use permits, the variances, and the tentative map would be all items that you would look at appealing if you desire to do that. So, thank you for hanging in there with us, we'll, we'll be done.